It used to be a nice day. No, it didn't. I had differently regarded. And rolling garden. That was fun. I hadn't seen.
That was an old time.
It was. We were, we were definitely reminiscent. I remember thinking back to two thousand four. I was literally driving down here for bond sales. And my brother went under that day. So we kept some bond sales. And he slipped out of bond interest pension. So I think his.
Unlock the door.
But then we should put a paragraph in.
Well, I want what it says.
No, I'm not in town.
More stuff, yeah. Correct. I made so many. I don't think there's been much. I've got an idea, but I know when there is. Cause my, uh, promise never retire may come true. But yeah, and that's just a little thing. We would just have one. And, and seeing the, the, the video, video. Inside central, Kershaw and the video of the wars. I mean, if I was a parent, I would not let my child go to school. Seeing that video, what it did, it was inside school. And it just cr- crashed and like the ceiling collapsed and desk got thrown over. Luckily, I can remember. Fran, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. You're fine. This is what it looks like. This is what baby Peter looked like down here.
Exactly.
Tell you said.
Well, nice to see you. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, this is the first time in a decade that they still board here. People spending over the, over the referendum. It's been more than decades since they've had a successful referendum. So this is special and thank the name.
Warren. That's where she should be sitting.
This is Chad, Chad Callen, financial advisor.
But they feel lucky. They have some students who are. Get the hands.
We're about good for.
I have not. I've really been.
I have too. That's why I'm.
What are you doing here?
Okay.
Working for.
Well, well.
You can't make them.
Yeah, I'm saying. Yes, it's better to keep your enemy. Where they land and. Is this for the, uh, we hear. Yeah. I said move second.
Good morning and welcome to day two of the Beaufort County Board of Education work session. Today is February twenty nine, twenty twenty. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please be seated. The media has been properly notified. We don't have any public comments, so we can get started. Our first topic is debt management P E two D.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Every time I make a presentation to y'all, I say I'm glad to be here. I really am glad today because this is the first time in over a decade that school board for Beaufort County School District has been able to put into play, put into, and to move forward with a referendum approved capital plan. So this is really an important day and I do appreciate being able to be part of it. And sort of spoiler alert, I don't want to steal Chad's thunder, but I think you're going to be really happy with the, the information you get today. Maybe so happy that you would want to include it in one of your points of celebration in one of your future meetings. So here's, here's hoping that, that y'all are all smiling when we're, when we're finished. So we want to give you a few thoughts about the referendum approved debt and how you might want to organize or, or structure the sale of that debt. And there are a number of factors that we'd like you to consider. And of course, the, the first is the legal authority and the, the fact that you do have a successful referendum. Then y'all made commitments regarding your millage. The, there are I R S regulations we need to look, look at and stay within. Then y'all should probably think about the availability and use of bid premium that we're going to talk a little bit about to this morning. Planning for future phases of your, your referendum building program and planning for your eight percent program. So I'm going to touch on those things and Chad is going to be talking to you about the numbers as they relate to those issues. So in the, the next slide, obviously in November, y'all received approval from your voters for these two separate questions. You are authorized to issue these bonds in one or more series, so you don't have to issue everything at the same time. You do have to have all of the debt issued by the fifth anniversary. That's one of the, the statute constitutional requirements. And you are not required to issue the full amount of your approved bonds. And I think at one of the referenda that was successful back ten or more years ago, there was a fairly significant amount of debt that y'all did not issue. I think there was a piece of property that was intended to be purchased and it became unavailable or the school did not, the property was not purchased. And so you just didn't issue all of the debt. So that is an option as you go forward. Just wanted to make sure that y'all realize that the referendum is permissive. It says you're authorized to issue this debt. It does not require you to issue this debt. The, um, and so with your commitments towards your millage increases, uh, you predicted and, and told the public that there would be approximately seven mill increase. And although that's not a legal restriction and it can't really be a restriction because it's general obligation debt, it is something that everyone working for y'all will do everything to keep, to stay within that millage limitation. And at thirty eight point seven one mils, I think you're going to be absolutely fine and you'll probably be able to be under the seven mils that you predicted. Now, the target millage rate and, and the numbers that Chad's going to show you include debt service for your existing bonds, annual eight percent bonds at about twenty million dollars and the referendum bonds. So there are a couple of regulations related to the, well, there's many regulations of the IRS related to tax exempt debt. But today we want to focus on the ones that relate to how you decide how much to, to issue. What's the appropriate amount of debt for you to issue at any one time? And there is a requirement that the district has to have a reasonable expectation that it can spend eighty five percent of the net, of the net sale proceeds, including interest earnings and bid premium of an issue within thirty six months. And so that's sort of the hallmark. What do you think you can spend in thirty six months? Now, as part of the closing documents, we'll prepare a federal tax certificate and these commitments will be contained in that tax certificate. And Dr. Rodriguez will sign that certificate. So I think he's going to want y'all to make sure that, that we can meet that test. And, and at the rate with which y'all are spending, um, your referendum, spending in your referendum program, I don't think that you will have any problems with that. And Chad is going to talk to you in a little more detail about the, um, about your cash flows that we're working off of. And I should say anytime y'all have a question about any of this, because we generally don't brief a board in this kind of detail. But I think y'all are a board that's interested in the details. And because you have really a lot of scrutiny coming from folks outside the district, folks in your community, we wanted to give y'all at least an overview of the rules and why we're going to recommend what we recommend. So another IRS regulation that we need to look at is what we call arbitrage and rebate. So arbitrage is the difference, the interest rate difference between the interest you're paying on your bonds and the interest earned by investing the proceeds of those bonds. And arbitrage can be positive or negative. Beginning in two thousand and eight up until about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, positive arbitrage was not in anybody's vocabulary. Every, negative arb, negative arb. And, uh, but now we're getting to the point where it is possible that the school district would, um, be able to earn some positive arbitrage because the, the, um, investment rates are climbing up a little bit and the borrowing rates are actually lowering down. Thank you. And I've, so here's an example, just, um, so when, when you have positive arbitrage, there's a general expectation that you have to give it back to the federal government. So you can earn the amount that you're, you're paying on the bonds. But if you earn over that amount, that amount should be rebated to the, has to be rebated to the federal government, unless there are some exceptions that relate to how quickly the bond proceeds can be spent. The, um, school district already has a rebate consultant on board. And our advice to folks now is to bring that rebate consultant in from the very beginning of the, the borrowing and of the spending, because they have to look at the amounts that are spent and when they're spent. And it's a lot easier to do that contemporaneously and it's a lot harder when you have to go back. And usually rebate is not, um, paid until the fifth year. So that's something that you would want to monitor to make sure that in that fifth year, you have the, um, to have the, um, revenue to pay the rebate. So rebate is not a penalty. It's not a bad thing. The only bad thing about rebate is if you have spent the money that you need to give back to the federal government. And so that's why keeping it up to date on an annual basis is a good idea. And here's a very simple chart to just give you a little bit of an idea of how rebate would work. So if you had a hundred million dollars in, in borrowed funds and the yield on the bonds is under two percent, one point seven five, your investment rate at two point two five percent, difference is fifty basis points or half a percent. And so the difference on an annual basis would be five hundred thousand dollars. Now you don't pay that annually. As I said, you would calculate that on the fifth anniversary. But if you were going to have a rebate liability of half a million dollars, you'd want to know about it so you don't spend it. And I'm confident that, that Tanya and the rebate consultant will, will keep all that on track. Now, the use of the bid premium, the, what is a bid premium and how do we use it? A bid premium is sometimes a hard concept to, to grasp because people sometimes say it's like free money, you know, but, but it's not free money. It's actually a cash payment paid by the purchaser to the, to the issuer that causes the interest rate on the coupon to be higher than the yield or the true interest cost. So let me step back for a minute and say that it is in effect prepaid interest. And, Robin, let's switch to the next page. I think it might be helpful. And, um, so th- these are the results of a bond issue that I did in, um, twenty nineteen. And we've highlighted on the, in the last column on the right hand side, the dollar price. And you'll see that the eight, three, four, and the next year, the two point seven, three, two, and the next year, four point five, four, four. Any number over one hundred is premium. They are paying you for, for a bond instead of paying you a dollar, they're paying you a dollar and eighty three cents, eighty four cents. And what that does is it takes the coupon. If you look in the middle of, of the page, the coupon rate in the first year was three percent. So if you were owner of those bonds, you'd be getting, you'd be receiving a three percent rate of return. But really the, the school district is only paying one point zero five percent. That's the yield. And the, the dollar price of over one hundred is what allows the three percent to be paid to the bond holder. So the bond holder is paying more than the par amount in order to receive a higher coupon. And that, that is why it's reflected in interest rate. It is not reflected in the par amount of the bonds. But it is also considered proceeds of the bonds. And so the bid premium needs to be included in the arbitrage calculations, et cetera. Now, the amount of a premium will vary from day to day. It depends on the market. But it's very possible that for the next set of referend- the referendum bonds to be issued, the premium could be very substantial in the range of five to ten million, maybe even more. And that's why we wanted to talk, discuss this with you because you have, you have some options on what you can do with this premium. And, Robin, I think it's page eleven. Okay, so in South Carolina, school districts have an option on how to utilize premium. I would note that cities and counties do not have an option. Cities and counties have to put their premium in their debt service fund and use it to pay debt service. In two thousand and four, state law was amended for school districts. So now state law is silent as to what a school district has to do or can do with its premium. So there are options. One, you can use it to make debt service payments. Two, you technically can reduce the par amount of the bonds that you issued. Or you can put it in your project fund and use it for capital expenses. The decision on how to use the premium doesn't have to be made at the time the bonds are issued. Y'all could, um, in, in most school districts, let the premium go into the project fund. And then they determine at some point in the capital plan how best to use that premium. Is it even in year four or five, you could say, well, we're not going to use it for debt service. Or you could say, well, now we have a little bit of an overrun here at this project, so we're going to use a premium for this. So y'all stay in control of the amount of premium. So, so when the final numbers are issued and say it's a hundred million dollars, but a hundred and fifteen million dollars is put into the, the project fund. I really wanted y'all to be able to explain that to people outside of the school district who may say things like, you have borrowed more money than you should have. Or you have exceeded the amount authorized in the resolution. But again, premium does not count against the par amount. If you get a premium on an eight percent bond, it does not count against your eight percent debt limit. And the premium does not count against the amount of debt authorized in the referendum. And that is largely because, remember, it's really all on the interest side. It is not on the principal side of the, um, equation. And that's a, if y'all got any questions about that? Honestly, sometimes I have questions about it, so. Yes, sir.
Hey, David, can you please use the microphone?
I just wanted to verify it's included in the arbitrage, so, so you have to account for that.
Correct. When you, when you're doing the arbitrage and rebate reports and surveys on an annual basis, they will track that, as they will with interest earned.
So some of that money's going to go to the federal government, not?
Potentially, depending on how quickly it's, it's spent. But yes, it is, it is possible that some of that money would be rebated back to the federal government.
Thank you.
So in planning for future phases of your building program, again, not to take away the good news that Chad's going to share with you, uh, but in deciding how you want to structure the borrowing of the first phase, you probably want to keep in mind the fact that there could be a second phase even in the next two to four years. And so you could have, with your millage cap at about thirty eight mils, you could say, well, we're going to pay this debt back at thirty eight mils and get it done as quickly as possible. Or you could say, well, we're going to do it at a reasonable level and we're going to allow the debt service payments to step down so that when you think it may be time for the second phase, the second phase can be layered in on top without causing any undue tax burden to your, to your taxpayers. And this is a concept, this is, um, a topic that Chad's going to talk to y'all about in detail. But again, um, a heads up, I think you're going to be really happy with, with the information he gives you because the, the planning, the financial planning for this referendum is very, very, very conservative. And the reason for that was to be able to be sure that your commitment on millage rates could be, could be maintained. The, the previous financial advisor actually runs, um, numbers at a five percent coupon or at a fi- at a five percent interest rate actually. And, and so there's going to be a lot of flexibility that y'all have because everything was very, was very conservative that, that y'all were dealing with. So now about your eight percent program. I think it, this was a process that started last spring, I think it was in, in May, that y'all got a report about, uh, principal amounts of different bonds from past years that, um, had, had been in those project funds and hadn't yet been spent. And so the, I think that y'all used, um, an amount of, of that, those monies to reduce your eight percent borrowing that was done this past fall. And so as part of that whole process of identifying all the old amounts stuck away in, um, in accounts, uh, the current administration and Tanya have gone back, um, wow, they, they've gone back to the, to the time. I didn't even have any gray hair and, um, and have come up with a total of thirteen and a half million dollars of primarily interest earned and, um, premiums that haven't been spent. And so today, in planning for your eight percent and working that in conjunction with your referendum, y'all have a choice. You could say that, that thirteen and a half million, we're going to keep that as a sort of fun balance for, for the rainy day. You could say, well, we're going to use that thirteen to, and a half to reduce what we borrow for our eight percent. You, you could, you could use it to reduce what you borrow in the referendum. I wouldn't really recommend that because the thirteen and a half million is pretty unrestricted. It's, it's so old that it's no longer tied to a specific project, so it has a lot of flexibility. So two things, when you're, um, if y'all are, um, make the policy decision to use that amount to offset your debt, your eight percent, that gives you approximately a thirteen and a half million dollar amount, a big slug, if you will, of debt service that Chad can put in the first year of the referendum. And that will give your taxpayers a advantage because the faster you pay off principal, the less interest you are paying. So again, that's a Chad thing. He'll discuss it with y'all. But you do have, you do have a lot of options with that thirteen and a half million. Now, it's very unlikely that there's going to be any, any rebate liability attached to this amount because in between two thousand and eight and, um, like I said, two thousand and about eighteen, all we had was negative arbitrage. And negative arbitrage offsets positive arbitrage. That's part of the calculation. But I would recommend that you hold back or just don't fully expend all those funds and maybe keep a half a million dollars until the rebate analysis is totally complete. So that way, if you do owe anything, you've got the money to pay it.
Mr. Strippinger has a question.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, we, we already made a decision about what we would do with that money in, in the motion.
Okay.
Was to offset the current year's borrowing.
Well.
So that decision's already been made.
Well, then, um, that's excellent. I mean, y'all are, again, like I say, there's a lot of good news coming that you're, I hope your tax, a lot of good news today, I think, that are gonna, will be, will be helpful. So y'all, I say I have one final note. I'm actually going to have two final notes. But, um, y'all have on June one, this year, June one of every year, you have an interest only payment in your installment purchase revenue bonds. Modest amount for y'all, three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars and some change. Act three eighty eight requires that this payment be made from the proceeds of general obligation bonds. And so the legislators back in two thousand and six established that rule. That amount does count against your eight percent, but again, it's pretty de minimis. And you can, um, we can issue this three twenty six. When we issue the referendum debt, it'll just be a little add on. And there'd be no really additional cost or fees. So you don't have to worry about how you're going to borrow that money. You don't have to worry about SCAGO. You just roll it into the issue we're doing and you'll have the money in, in June to make that payment. And the, um, last note I'd like to give you is that, um, y'all will be passing a bond resolution, authorizing whatever amount you authorize. And on the way to over here, I was thinking and the story came to my, well, not a story, a fact. And on the way over here, I was thinking, and the story came to my, well, not a story, a fact. In 2008, I was on my way to Beaufort for a bond sale. And it was the day that the news was released that Lehman Brothers had collapsed. And I remember I pulled into one of those nice produce places there on 21. We had a conversation, and we canceled the sale. We flipped it out for, and did a bond anticipation note, which ended up being a great strategy, and it worked really well. Right now, today, with the uncertainty about the poor old coronavirus, I hate to keep calling it that because I have enjoyed Corona beer in my life. So I feel bad for those folks. So in the resolution that we prepare, I would like to include a paragraph that says that we can flip this out to a ban, and the superintendent would be authorized to make that decision with advice from the financial advisor. And the reason I would say included in this resolution is that we are on track to have this money for you the first week of April. And you are rapidly moving along very nicely with the current program, and we don't want y'all to run out of money. And we don't want you to exceed the $8 million that has previously been approved. And so if you give that flexibility, we could huddle up with Dr. Rodriguez and flip out a bond issue, a ban, in a matter of a few days. So that would be actually my final note. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Ms. Robyn.
Can you explain to me what a ban, what that is?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, yeah. A ban is a bond anticipation note. It is, under state law, a bond anticipation note can only be outstanding for one year. And it technically is issued in anticipation of issuing long-term bonds. And so when, and we had actually discussed, maybe in this building program, you might want to do a ban to have money very quickly. And, but short-term rates, long-term rates are such that I don't think we're recommending a ban unless it becomes a necessity as a result of the economic upset with the virus.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I went through over anything too quickly, or you have any other questions, of course, I'm going to be here for the duration.
Dr. Wizniewski.
I think my question might be actually for Tanya, but I just was wondering if, in regard to any potential arbitrage, rebate, premium information, are we going to receive updates on that information yearly, every six months or so, just so that we're kind of on the same page of what that is looking like through the life of these?
Absolutely, we were able to do that. It would probably be a good opportunity for me to bring forward in this meeting each year. I have an arbitrage report from last year on some of the, a portion of the older bonds. So we need to, a portion of the 13 million that we had waited on and received back in late May. And so we'll bring those forward, and we can share them on an annual basis with the board under the PE 2.0 as an additional expectation. I think that would be a good opportunity to bring it forward with all the conversations, especially with bond counsel and financial advisor present to answer questions. It's a complicated subject, and I don't necessarily have all the answers of how the arbitrage is calculated and that sort of thing, so, yes.
Mr. Guyer.
From a strategic view, I am very concerned about having sufficient 8% borrowing capability to deal with disaster relief. If we had a major hurricane in September, we have a fund balance that we could write checks for. But we have insurance, but the insurance, you know, that doesn't come the next day. The FEMA doesn't come the next year. And we've got to put kiddos back in school, back in class right away. So we can use the fund balance to rent a building or do whatever, get the cleanup going, and then we can get 8% money to borrow, to put 22,000 kids back into a classroom as soon as possible. And it's been my concern about our 8% borrowing capacity as we've drawn it down. At one time, we had over $100 million in borrowing capacity. And we were, last year, I think we were down to 30 million. Is that about right?
Chad actually has a slide on the debt capacity and how that grows over a series of years. So we're going to talk about that in a little more depth shortly, yes.
But that's why, when I hear about this $13 million, I am interested in keeping 8% borrowing capacity up at a reasonable level, at least 50 million, and even more would be even better, so that we have the ability to respond in a case of an emergency. If we don't have that, we can't write a bad check. We have to have immediate access to funds quickly. So that's my concern about how that is being used.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Just to your point, earlier this year, Hursaw County had a tornado hit and wiped out school, just overnight.
Mr. Strippinger.
My understanding is we're rolling this 13 million and reducing the amount that we're going to borrow. Doesn't that increase our 8% capacity by 13 million or so? But it hits your target, okay.
I'll be around for any other questions. And so now, Chad Cowan, I think is next, financial advisor. And I think now there are going to be a lot of smiles, so let me, let's get to the big show.
Good morning, chair members of the board. My name's Chad Cowan. I am with a firm called Hilltop Securities. Since I am kind of new here, I put a little information in about my firm, not really a sales pitch, but just letting you know. We're a nationwide firm. We have about 200 people who do this on a daily basis, all day, every day. When I say that out loud, people usually kind of groan. But we work on about 1,000 of these transactions a year as a firm across the country, from Alaska to southern Florida, so California to upstate New York. So we really do cover the entire swath of the country and provide a kind of a wide range of services for clients like yourselves. I've been doing this for about 20 years. I've spent time as a municipal advisor, I've spent time as an underwriter. And prior to landing at Hilltop about four years ago, I spent six years as a treasurer for a local government, where I worked on all of our debt issuances, our investments, our banking. And in a moment of bad judgment, when our risk manager resigned and my boss said, "Hey, do you want to do risk management?" I said, "Sure, how hard could it be?" I learned a lot about workers' compensation and a whole bunch of other things related to managing risk for a large municipal entity through that process. I'm happy to be back away from the risk management side. It is a lot of work, so if there's a risk manager here somewhere, my condolences. With that, we're going to move on, talk a little bit about your, kind of the status of your credit rating. So historically, you've used Moody's and S&amp;P on your bond sales. They put together a criteria that kind of judges your credit on a variety of criteria. I won't go into great detail here because it's right there on the screen, the significant detail. But it's kind of a broad-based approach of looking at you as an entity. It includes financial management, it includes the local economy, and it includes also a kind of a high-level overview of the school board and how it manages the process of running a school district. With that being said, you guys have fantastic ratings from both agencies. Moody's is an A, AA1, S&amp;P is a double A. Fitch is a third agency, which you have historically not used. Again, you're just about at the highest rating you can get from Moody's, a step below with S&amp;P. Again, they're both fantastic and strong ratings from both agencies. And what, how those are applied as we walk through this conversation, when investors evaluate bonds, they look at your bonds compared to other bonds they can buy that are similar. And so one of their calculations they use is they look at the bond ratings and say, "Well, if you're an A1 or an A+ versus a AA1, they will want higher return on lower-rated bonds." So what this tells you is that you're really well-positioned for fantastic rates in the current market. And when we get to the discussion of the current market, you'll see exactly how fantastic those rates could be. On the next page, we actually went through, and there's that, we have a big Excel file that goes through, and we kind of mimic what we think Moody's rating is going to come out for you all. And so we put in historical data with regards to fund balances and the local economy, and it calculates it out and spits out an evaluation that's similar to, but not exactly what Moody's would be. And I think this comes up pretty much exactly where you were last year when there was a different firm doing this exact same presentation, exactly where Moody's was last fall. So we would anticipate, unless something has changed from your last financial statements, which have gotten no indication that anything has, that you're going to come out about the same place with Moody's. So if there are any questions?
I actually have a question, but maybe Tanya needs to answer this. So our fund balance, the board decided, I can't remember exactly when, but a year or more ago, that we wanted to keep it in the 15% to 17% range of our, that would be of our operating revenue and/or expenses, it would be?
That's correct, operating, yes.
So, right now, as I recall, we're in the, as Mr. Guyer mentioned, we're in the $30 million range, 36 or some?
36 million, about 13.2% currently, as of the end of June 30, 2019.
So quick calculations, will that 13 million, would that make us in the 15% to 17%?
No, ma'am, the 13 million is in the capital projects fund. So that's actually a fund balance outside of the operations fund.
Okay, got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guyer.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I sat in on the teleconference, or phone conference, with the Moody's folks last year. And our only concern for them was our fund balance was on the downward slope, mainly because last year we got a deficit in revenue, the $9 million. So that's something we have to absolutely keep our eye on. And we cannot let that fund balance get down any further and keep moving it back up, or we have a chance, not a real good chance, but we do have a chance of dropping down in our Moody's fund rating. So we have to keep our eye on that ball.
And as a former risk management-type person, the other piece that was discussed earlier, in the case of a hurricane, the lower that balance is, the lower actual cash you have on hand to deal with those problems, even in the short term and in a pinch. So there's the credit side, which is one thing. But then there's also your reality side, which is, quite frankly, much more important than your rating.
The worst part about it is, is that our hurricanes seem to come in September, August, September, and so on. And that's our lowest period of cash flow from the property taxes that we get in December and January. So that's why it's really critical, because we're really having to buy a TAM every year, a tax anticipation bond. And that's costing us thousands of dollars in interest every year. Actually, if we were able to have a fund balance that would not cause us to use the tax anticipation note, we'd have to be in about a $50 million range to be able to do that. That would be ideal, but I don't know that we could ever gain that much in fund balance in the short term.
Mr. Dowling.
I agree wholeheartedly with your premise, and I hope that we remember it when we vet the budgets in terms of what our priorities for the district are, student achievement, and then how operations and administrative supportive budgets support that. But we'll have to keep that in mind, it can't be a trade-off.
All right, so moving on to rates. As Franny mentioned earlier, so during the referendum, the financial advisor used a very conservative 5% interest rate for where you all might borrow, which is great. In the planning phase, that gives you guys lots of comfort and cushion with regards to making sure that what has been promised essentially to the voters is kind of where you come out. I know that as one of the, you know, you violate that once, and that next referendum's a whole different discussion. So this is an interest rate chart. So in my industry, we use something called the Municipal Market Data Interest Rate Scale. It is, provides you rates for year one all the way through year 30. And frequently, when people like me are talking to folks like you, we'll talk about spread to the MMD. So if you're borrowing a 20-year, some bonds that mature in 20 years, we will say that will price about 25 basis points, a quarter of a percent, on top of the AAA MMD, because it's a generic AAA scale. So this tracks the 20-year interest rate on the MMD scale, along with a variety of different economic events. You don't need to read all of them. It may be more interesting than important to look at the correlation because I'm not sure that anyone's ever done a correlation to what any of these things mean relative to up or down rates. But what you can see is since July of 2018, is we've moved pretty much straight down on that 20-year borrowing. If you move to slide number 12, you'll see, this is another chart, same kind, same information, that shows the 10-year MMD and the 30-year MMD, so similar information. Again, if you look to the right-hand side since 2000, middle of 2018, it is straight down. If you look at the table at the top right-hand corner, specifically the last column, so the 10-year MMD has been lower on this chart about 0% of the time. It's probably rounded down because there's been a couple of weeks where it's been a little lower than it is now. But these rates are also about a week and a half old. Since this chart was created, the, if you look at the current rate for the 10-year MMD at 1.18 on this chart, at the end of yesterday, it was 0.93. So we're down 25, a quarter of a percent in the last four or five days. The 30-year MMD moved from 1.83 to 1.52. The US Treasury moved from 1.60 to 1.20. And the 30-year Treasury moved from a little over 2% to 1.70. All of those are record lows. Do I think we'll stay right there for the next month until you sell your bonds? I don't know, but I think it kind of doesn't matter because any move we're going to see is not going to be a dramatic move up. It might slowly go up, it might go back to where we were a couple of weeks ago. But still, a couple of weeks ago, on the tax-exempt side, we were still lower about 0% of the time, plus or minus 1%. So you're going to get a fantastic rate on this issue. On the next chart, it's the same information a 14th way, apparently. I thought that was important to just keep reiterating this. This is a different way of looking at it. And this chart shows every single year of that interest rate scale I was talking about. The blue bar is since 2000, the range from high to low. The green bar is since January of 2018. And that blue line across the very bottom is where we are today. So again, it just reiterates, since 2000, rates today are at, maybe not, well, actually, right now, they are at absolute lows. But so you're going to be somewhere in that lower 5% in the next month, I would imagine. It would be very surprising if there was a dramatic move. Even a dramatic move would keep you in rates well below where you had forecast last year during the referendum. So moving on to the bond structuring part of the conversation, on page 15, we kind of go over some of the stuff that Franny mentioned earlier as far as, hey, what are our kind of, I like to refer to them as foul polls, if you're a baseball fan, like, where do we have to stay within? And make sure that we are hitting not only the legal requirements, but also the political realities of what you guys had discussed during the referendum. You know, additionally, we on the issuance side also take into account a couple of different things. One, current market conditions, as Franny mentioned. There could be reasons, if there was a market dislocation, where you might want to do a bond anticipation note in this market. It would have to be something where the market was not functioning well because rates are really phenomenally low right now, as I just went through over and over. We like to look at ways to minimize debt issuance costs as far as, you know, a ban. If you do a bond anticipation note, that's two full transactions, two sets of rating costs. And so for me, having sat in Tanya's seat, you know, why would you want to do something twice if you can do it once? Just from an efficiency standpoint, not only from a timeline standpoint just for staff, staff, but also on the cost side and things along those lines. And then also minimizing the interest rate risk. Again, we are historically low, historically low interest rate environment. So, if you issue a slightly larger chunk or a smaller chunk, the more you issue, the less interest rate risk you have going forward. Again, we're at such absolute low rates, and you had such a conservative modeling analysis done early, I think that, you know, you guys have a lot of flexibility here. And also with where the market is, a lot of comfort in the cushion that was built in from the initial analysis that was done. Talking about cash flow, back to the reasonable, reasonable expectation to spend 85% of your proceeds within 36 months. On page 16, we'd received a kind of a spending cash flow from, from Tanya and her team. If you look at that red arrow, that's about 36 months from today, and it's about a $300 million number. So, effectively speaking, to stay within IRS guidelines, you could issue your entire authorization if you wanted to. 300 and almost $50 million is a lot of money to spend. That's just a lot of money to spend, so I'll leave it at that. But, from a, back to the foul polls, that foul poll really isn't even in play from the standpoint of that reasonable expectation. We have a little discussion of short-term and long-term borrowings here. I think I've already kind of covered that, so I won't go into it in detail. None of these at, in the current, your current situation really apply. There's, you know, the one is if something happened between now and, and the end of March that caused some sort of market dislocation where we thought, hey, we need the money, but we don't really want to fix rates because the market's not working the way it should. I'd be really surprised. There's digging a little, going into a little more detail. So, we, we track what are called, there's bond funds that buy municipal bonds in the market. And so, we track inflows to those funds and outflows. If there are significant inflows, that means that there are a lot of people who want to buy into those funds. So, there are, I think right now, been like 58 straight weeks of inflows into those funds. So, there is massive appetite, there is not by investors to buy bonds, there are not enough bonds in the market. I think last year, and I'd have to go check the statistics, but so, one of the other thing we track is how many bonds are being sold new versus how many are maturing each year. And I think there are points last year where there were months where there were actually more bonds maturing, so people were getting their money back than bonds were being issued. So, there is a lot of money out there right now for, for this type of product. So, you really, I cannot, I'd have to be, I'd have to be convinced by something external that we wouldn't need to do anything on the short-term side. Another little chart just illustrating, the other piece of this on the short-term versus long-term, the chart on the right here on page 18, it shows the difference between a 10-year borrowing and a two-year borrowing, which is like 30, 30 basis points. It may have shifted a little bit since last week, but, and between a two-year borrowing and a 30-year borrowing being less than 1%. Again, you're borrowing 30, 30-year debt, and you're not borrowing it, but you could borrow 30-year debt for not much more than two-year debt. So, there's some, you know, back to minimizing interest rate risk, there's just not a whole lot of motivation in today's market to, to, to take on short-term debt from that standpoint. So, getting on to a couple bond sale scenarios, we looked at two scenarios. One was a two-sale scenario and one's a three-sale scenario. We use consistent, in our opinion, relatively conservative assumptions on assessed value growth of 1% annual debt service on the 8% plan of about $22 million, which is the same as what was shown at this meeting last year. And then our, we use current rates of about two weeks ago, so now we have, now it has an interest rate cushion for, for this year's bonds. And then our future bonds, we added a one and a half percent to those. That still doesn't get us close to the 5%, but it does provide cushion for rates to go up significantly and still to be in a good spot. So, in our opinion, we, we think that going forward, it should bring you out in a pretty conservative projection, even using, oh, it's here. So, scenario one, this involves three sales kind of around 100 and 100, between 100 and 125 million each in this, this month, or, nope, a month from now, about. And then a year from now, another 120 million, and then two years after that, that last $100 million. And you can see on the chart, the blue line is 38.71 mils, and this structure allows for, and I guess one other thing here, so the true interest cost, the borrowing cost on these, on the first series in 2020 would be a little over 2. And then the second and third, about 3.5%, a little over 3.5%. Well below the initial assumptions that were used. So, we, it shows that cushion between the two. And then if you look at the structure below, you can see the existing debt in the dark blue, the 8% debt in the light blue forecasted, and then layering in all three series of bonds here in the gray. And again, it puts you slightly below the 38, I think it's somewhere in the mid 36s as far as the millage rate for the next four years, and then it allows it to step down to a little bit below 30. So, if there were another referendum, you would have that opportunity, which we'll show a little later, to layer in debt over that and provide that capacity with potentially no millage rate increase. Or if the voters say, you know what, we don't want to move forward with another one, then that rate would step down somewhat. Scenario two-
Mr. Strippinger?
Quick question, on your chart-
Yep.
Does that anticipate that 13 million offset against the 8%?
For this year, I, I don't think, I don't think it does.
Okay. So, that's, that's something that would, that would change that line?
Yes.
For 2022, probably.
Yeah, and, and what I'll say is, no, it does not. I'm fairly certain it does not, because I think we had a flat borrowing amount going forward after. Scenario three, same set of assumptions, or sorry, scenario two, same set of assumptions, but it's just split into one sale in 2020 and the second one in 2022. You kind of end up almost in exactly the same place. You know, a lot of that is the fact that you're, you're kind of bringing down your interest rate risk and you're getting an assumption for an additional 50 million in the first sale at a lower rate. So, again, about the same place. I think the total interest cost on the second one is actually slightly lower. Again, that's because you're borrowing about $50 million at a percent and a half less, but that's also projected, so as far as what future rates might be. This, next couple of slides are scenario 2A, or 1A and 2A, and this just kind of illustrates, hey, what happens if we had another referendum? And how would that fit in and what would it do to your overall millage rate? Again, it illustrates that you would be able to execute on that plan. This assumes that all 281 million is issued in '24, which is not a likely result. But, again, for planning purposes, back to the, you could, if, if, you know, if all three of the prongs were met as far as the 85%, etc., etc., it, it could. And it definitely demonstrates that, you know, with 1.5% or less movement in rates, that in 2024, you could go out and communicate with voters, hey, phase two of that community's recommendation, the community committee's recommendation, we can implement that without changing the tax, the millage rate going forward. And again, scenario 2A, same thing, it just has two sales instead of three for this referendum. It is, looking onto page 24, kind of goes through the 8% capacity calculations, as was alluded to earlier, it increases rapidly over the next couple of years as stuff is paid down going forward, so. So, I, I guess, you know, in, in summary, you all have a lot of decisions to make, and they're good decisions. I think that, you know, the, the planning went into this on the front end really helps facilitate some of these options that you have with regards to how much to borrow now, how much to borrow later, how to structure your future millage rate. I think you're, you're obviously benefiting from the current interest rate environment But, you know, I think that you are in a good position. I think the market is fantastic for, I think I saw a sale, a little smaller than we're talking about here, but was somewhere in the 40 or 50 million range and it had like 15 or 16 bids. That's the other piece, as we go through this process, the bonds will be sold at what's called a competitive bid. And basically, we publish the official statement electronically, all the investors get a copy of it, and the notice of sale, which talks about, hey, here are the parameters for the sale, par amount, any legal restrictions with regards to premiums and discounts, all those things are laid out there in this electronic format. And then bidders basically put in their number and click submit, and then at a given time, we click a button, it shows us the rates. And, you know, there is, again, a lot of appetite for this. You'll receive multiple bids, and the bid with the lowest overall borrowing cost is what will be selected. It's a nice, very, very transparent, when I started in this business, bids were faxed in, and this really takes some of the, I mean, I think under, bond underwriters are potentially, and no offense if there's a doctor in the room, in the room, but my mom, my mom was a nurse, and she would always complain about her doctor's handwriting, but I think underwriters might actually have worse handwriting than most doctors. So, we would get forums, we're like, turning it upside down, trying to make out what it means. So, this process is fantastic on the electronic side.
I didn't explain to Chad who all the board members were. I apologize for that.
So, Chad, I have a question for you. So, I'm kind, I'm surprised with the way you've, that, you know, issuing your, your different scenarios here. Scenario one, issuing the three bonds versus scenario two, issuing the two larger bonds. So, and the total interest is slightly less with the two larger bonds, and that's purely based, I mean, you're estimating what the interest rate is going to be on that second issuance.
Right.
So, to me, it seems just logically that we would be smarter, since the interest rates are low now, to borrow a larger amount now, because there's more certainty of what the interest rate is now versus, you know, another year or two. So, what's the, give, give the opposite, what's the advantage of spreading it versus what I just said?
Well, so I think there's kind of two things. One is, in my experience, spending over $100 million and staying on the timelines you anticipate is hard. It just is. I used to work, we were talking earlier, I've done bond issues for school districts. I've done a ton of them in Washington State historically, before I moved to somewhere that's sunnier. And we, I worked for a very large urban school district who had, they issued $80 million like clockwork. They built the exact same elementary school over and over and over because they're growing so fast. They would obviously twist it and turn it on the same, on just different pieces of land. But eventually, they said, you know, we need to pause for a year, we need to pause for two years because it just is hard to spend a lot of money. It just takes time. I think you guys are well positioned to spend a lot of money from the timelines that we've seen, but sometimes, you know, as you kick this thing into gear, issuing the 125 versus the 175, it allows for some of that slide, and back to Franny's discussion of arbitrage rebate, you're borrowing at a little over 2% in today's market. You'd probably be investing, so the, I think it's invested mostly in STIP?
LGB.
LGB? You know, it's probably been in the mid one and a halves recently, but if short-term rates continue to drop, and there's a lot of discussion about the Fed adjusting rates to help combat the impacts on the economy of the coronavirus, that return will go down. So, you're borrowing money at 2% and investing it at 1%. So, you're, there's some, that's the negative arbitrage that we were talking about earlier. Is that a big number? It's not a huge number. I mean, historically speaking, I think you'd have like 5% and 2%. And, and that, suddenly, you're borrowing $50 million over a couple of years, you do that math, and you're like, you've paid 6 or 7 million dollars of interest more than you've earned, and that becomes a big number. You know, it, it's a judgment call on, you know, in conjunction with the administration, and you all, it's kind of just thinking through what you think makes the most sense. Again, you know, we can always look back 12 months from now and say, did we make the right choice? But, we kind of have to make a choice based on what the best information is we have today. And again, just $175 million, if you were to go that route, that's a lot of money to spend. And maybe it's facilities, people who you could talk to about the plan and exactly where you are with regards to that, but that, that would be my hesitation for it.
No, it's a good explanation. Ms. Vidrich?
Can you say a little bit more about a ban, the bond anticipation note? So, and what, what scenario would have to occur that, that that would be recommended, given the very low interest rates that are, you know, are across us right now?
Yes, definitely. So, the, the story that Franny told earlier, so in that market, when Lehman Brothers was collapsing, people just stopped buying bonds. And so, in order to access the funds, you could have one bidder when you go to the competitive sale, and who know, the variability of what that rate is, you know, if they know they're the only bidder, they have a lot of leverage and they can put any numbers they want to in there. And, and that, that would be the situation where something in the market wasn't working right, where you would want to, to pause and say, maybe we should come up with an interim solution. I remember hearing stories, so when I first started in this business 20 years ago, I worked for a woman, her name's Rebecca Chow, fantastic lady, and she's been in the business since the early 1970s. And she said, she remembers going to bond sales where people had to manually deliver bids, and underwriters would have one envelope, another envelope, and another envelope. And what they'd do is they'd see who's in the room, and they'd pick this envelope, this envelope, or this envelope, because they'd be able to, they'd have that, know who, okay, well, I know they're a good bidder and they're not a good bidder, so I'm going to use my, my bigger interest rate envelope. And so, that's what you want to avoid, is get into a situation where you're moving forward with a sale and something's broke, not working in the market. And then, hey, you're taking a one-year interest rate risk where your market, your rate might be a little higher than you would hope, but you're not exposing the full $100 million for 20 years to that same interest rate dislocation. And to Franny's comment, also, you know, you'd have the option to, do we wait a month? Or do you do the ban and then wait a year? You know, it's, part of it's going to be discussion of that $8 million that has been approved, and things along those lines would be the other levers to pull in the interim.
So, if we may, maybe for a moment, talk about the timeline. We, Chad actually had a timeline prepared, but we were uncertain as to how the board wanted to move forward. Ultimately, we would like to bring a bond resolution on Tuesday, if, if there is a decision today, and move the process forward sooner, and be able to issue the bonds at April 1st. So, there's a series of things that have to happen between that. We're going to be having a ratings call. As soon as a decision is made on the amount of the issue of the bond, we'll be having a ratings call with Moody's and S&amp;P over the next two weeks. And so, as soon as that bond resolution is approved, that, those, that thing, that will occur. We're going to, then, it'll take another week or so to receive credit ratings, then we'll finalize the official statement, which is kind of the marketing tool to the bond buyers, and so they'll be able to peruse all of our finances, see what our fund balance is doing, see what our revenues are doing. And then, we notice the sale, and then eventually, there will be a sale date, hopefully around the March 31st timeframe. Would like to sell bonds by April 1st or so for closing potentially around April 15th. Of course, we would like to have that as soon as possible. We want to meet the, don't want to get into a position where we're using all of the $8 million that the board has approved, and so, that's the timeline that we've structured. We'd like to, like to follow that or, or have it even sooner if possible. But, ultimately, we'd like to bring forward, if we have a vote today on one of the scenarios, to bring that resolution back on Tuesday, March 3rd. to bring that resolution back on Tuesday, March third. If that is possible. If not, we would wait till the following board meeting on the seventeenth.
Mr. Strimper.
I don't think we can vote on the scenarios until we know what our spending plan is.
The spending plan is built into the cash flows in the presentation. And so these are well within the spending plan. So if we, the, there was a red arrow on thirty-six months. So the bonds would be issued about six months. The second round of bond issues would actually be issued about six months prior to that. So there'll be a significant overlap. There wouldn't be any danger of spending all the bonds before we needed to issue another bond issue or having too much of a lag time as well. So the cash flows are already incorporated into that.
Scenario one versus scenario two, the key to that decision seemed to be...
Would we be able to spend the scenario two fast enough? Okay. I'd have to take a look. Okay, we have the scenario two up there. Of course, I don't have that. Can you respond to that?
Yeah. So I think, so in looking at this cash flow, in the conversation, I think that you could, as I mentioned earlier, you could issue, with regards to the IRS rule, one hundred percent of your bond issue. I think that if we structure this with either the three bond scenario, we've kind of looked at the cash flows relative to this. And what, I suppose what we could do, if you want to, we could put together another, another chart that shows, as opposed to bars. Here's the anticipated expenditures. Here's the anticipated expenditure, incoming revenue for both scenarios and show as far as like the net cash balance every, every month or every quarter or whatnot to show that we're going to be, I think either of the scenarios would work with regards to cash flow for the spending that's projected. You know, and again, I think I mentioned earlier, you guys have a lot of flexibility relative to this.
That's, that's what I wanted to know because as Dr. Wad's pointing out, it seems like a no-brainer that we'd lock in the lowest historical rate with the biggest, you know, with that first scenario, go big and get it locked in. But the negatives that you pointed out, one was, can we spend the money?
Right.
And if we can, and if you answer that question, yes, we can spend the money. And that eliminates that as a variable and makes the decision much easier for us.
And I guess the point I was trying to make a little earlier was, there's the anticipated spending as you're starting up a major construction program versus what actually happens. That, that was what I was trying to enunciate earlier, which is sometimes, you know, you have the best plans in place. You have the best people running it and things just go slow. It rains, you know? When I was doing bond issues in the Northwest, it rained a lot. And sometimes you can't set concrete if it's raining too much. And suddenly, you've lost a month on a project. That's, that's what I was talking about. The cash flow supports both options one hundred percent with regard to what's been provided.
So we're rolling the dice on climate?
But you're always doing that with a construction project. It's, again, it's about making an educated choice. Rates are fantastic. You're gonna be well with, I mean, either one of those scenarios, you're well within the spending limits. We've set it up so you would not run out of cash, to Tony's point earlier, that if you did the three scenario, we've timed that second sale, kind of, I think it's maybe March of next year. So that, that way, as you're spending through this first full year of the construction program, hey, if it's going a little slower, you just push that second sale out three months. Same thing happens with the two-sale scenario. It's just that the second sale is two thousand twenty-two. You look at how you're spending and you slide it back then.
All right, that's what I'm looking for. The downside of making the wrong decision. If we go for scenario one and it turns out we can't spend the money.
I think you said scenario two.
The two, whatever it is, the borrowing more in that first chunk.
Right.
Yes, scenario two, that is. You know, if we, if we do that, which seems to make sense, but then something happens and we can't spend the money. But what's the, what's the downside? What are we gambling on, in other words?
There's the negative arbitrage piece, right? So you borrowed at a rate higher than what you can invest in.
And what's the number that would go with that?
Was probably, right now, probably one and a half to two fifteen. So that's sixty-five, seventy-five basis points maybe right now. But I, I think that number is probably going to drop on the reinvestment side a little bit. So it might be a percent that you're, you have borrowed at two percent and invested at one. But that's just in the interim.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get this down to a really simple thing for the gamblers in the audience. How much money are we gambling making, choosing the larger first purchase if something goes wrong versus? You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to go for the risk reward on this decision.
Right. I, I don't have that, like, if...
Big, small, medium?
With where the short-term rates and long-term rates are right now, like, that gap is smaller than it would normally be. Because you're investing in more than likely liquid money that is, that varies up and down. So part of the calculus is what happens with short-term interest rates, because if they go up, that gap closes, because your rates on your bonds are set. It likely, I mean, depending on what, you know, is it the whole program slows down? Is it ten percent, one project? It's hard to come up with a number. I mean, it could potentially be, you know, a seven-figure number, I would guess, a million-dollar number if, but again, you then would have to take the second step that says, well, what happened to interest rates on the borrowing side as of today? Because really, your short-term investment on your bond proceeds is gonna, you'd have some negative costs of carry during that period. But if long-term rates went up substantially between today and, you know, next year, the number's likely going to have a bigger impact in present value in today's dollars than your interest earnings piece.
I'd like to point out also, obviously, if there are concerns about the spending, I think, obviously, the more conservative approach would be to the smaller number. But the cash flow, from a cash flow perspective, the information, Mr. Auding, you can give us any input on this that provide, you know, the cash flow information was provided by the facilities office. So that is a, he can speak to the development of the cash flows and how quickly he believes that those can be actually honored as we have proposed to the bond counsel and financial advisor.
I'll tell you this, one thing I appreciate is him saying how hard it is to spend a hundred million dollars. I know y'all have heard me say over and over again, spending fifty million dollars this summer, that attempt is a daunting task. You may say it's easy, but it is something that does concern me. So when you're looking at the next three years, what do we have kind of planned? So this summer, we're looking at fifty million. Now, that's ten million and eight percent. So we're just talking referendum, correct? So we're looking this summer, forty million. Next summer, it's supposed to go up to closer to eighty, which that includes referendums, so let's call that seventy. So you're between the two summers, just summer work, you're looking at about a hundred and ten million dollars. Early next year, we want to start Robert Smalls. We also want to start Battery Creek High School. And by this time next year, we should be getting ready, or starting to talk about Hilton Head Middle School. So Battery Creek's a forty million dollar. You're looking at Robert Smalls being a sixty-plus million dollar. So those will be starting about this time next year. So if I was here in front of you and if things go according to plan, we'll have spent fifty million dollars. We'll have projects or contracts going out for another hundred million on top of that between Robert Smalls and Battery Creek High School. And then you'd have this summer, another seventy on top of that. So you're looking at, at this time next year or sometime in the spring, we could be in that, so you had forty plus a hundred plus another seventy. So you're looking at two hundred and ten, for the most part, under contract. About by, you know, by the start of the summer, when we're getting close to, about this time next year, we should be close to have spent forty million and have that other hundred plus, a hundred million under contract and then prob, and then the next seventy coming up here shortly for the upcoming summer. So that's what we're looking at for just in a two-year window. And then that Robert Smalls project's going to be about a two-year project. So even though we have sixty million under contract, it'll take us a good two years to spend all of that.
Okay. And scenario one says that we're going to borrow a hundred and seventy-four million for a shot, or scenario two, rather.
Yes.
Hey, I'm just trying to get this down to an easily understandable.
So what I'm saying is, if everything goes according to plan, and I appreciate him saying plans don't always go and you have to adjust along the way, we should be, by the end of next summer, so you're at, you're at a little over a year. We should have spent, or let's just say, two years from now. So not a year from now, but two years from now. We should have spent the forty million from this summer. We should have spent the seventy million from last summer, the upcoming summer. So that's a hundred and ten million spent. We should be in the process of spending well over fifty percent of that hundred million. And then you have Hilton Head Middle School on top of that, which should be started. Off the top of my head, I think that's thirty million. So did you add all those up?
That's one ninety-five. That's, that's a hundred and ninety-five million with, with all of the projects he mentioned. Within a two-year period of time. So we're, the question is, are we able to spend a hundred and...
Having a hard time following because you're mixing up what's contracted and what's spent.
Let's say two years from now, spent. Should be forty million this summer, eighty million, I mean, seventy million next summer. So a hundred and ten spent, two years from now.
Two years. Three years is the figure.
So the question, Robert, is, can we spend a hundred and seventy-five million in thirty-six months?
So the way, the way everything is structured...
Eighty-five percent of that, actually.
Yeah. If, if Robert Smalls starts according to schedule and gets going, if Battery Creek starts, you know, by this time next year, those are underway, then I'd say yes. If for some reason, there's a slowdown, then those two projects not getting started would be the, the reason that we'd have some difficulty.
And what's the likelihood of that?
It is a plan. All I can say is that's what we want to do. I would say y'all, we all have a part in that being successful.
I'm not going to get this down to the simplicity I was looking for, and I realize that's hard, but yeah, I'm just trying to get down how likely, you know, what's, what's the risk? What's, what's the payoff?
I don't want to gamble with money. I just kind of told you what our plan is.
Yeah, I, I know. That's why I'm shifting back to Tanya now. You're gonna make a recommendation on this from what you think?
If you would like me to do that, I shall do it. I'm, I...
Before you do that?
Yes.
I would love to have Franny come up here. She's heard this whole discussion. Let's hear your input, both sides. Mel, Rachel.
From a tax IRS standpoint, we'd have no trouble, given the tax opinion that y'all, that, with y'all saying that you reasonably would expect to spend eighty-five percent of the hundred and seventy-five in three years. So I don't think that would be a problem from, you know, a tax outlook. And negative arbitrage, you know, is an issue. No, no way to quantify it. One of the reasons why you would not invest in a fixed interest rate is the idea that, yeah, the next month or two, rates could go down, because like, who knows about this virus thing? But that after the election and, you know, everything's, you know, fired back up, you could have an interest rate at L-GIP of two and a quarter. So the whole negative arbitrage issue is one that, it is a gamble. And, you know, I'm sure that, you know, you want to be conservative. And you certainly don't, you know, nobody's saying borrow the full amount right now. But, I mean, having more money at two and a quarter percent interest for twenty years is like unheard of. But it's entirely up to y'all. You could say, well, instead of one seventy-five, let's do a hundred and fifty. I mean, it, whatever, whatever works for y'all. And as y'all are having this, before you finish your discussion, I would like to come back and talk about something a little bit is related but a little bit different. But let's continue on with, with this discussion. So tax-wise, I think y'all are fine.
So we have three people in the queue, Mel, Rachel, John.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, I'm not qualified to make the decision, but I think Tanya and Robert and Dr. Rodriguez should be the ones who bring us a recommendation on which of the two options or three options they, they decide upon. Because after all, they're the ones beheading the, the fruition of the project. And we're relying on them to be able to carry through. You know, and some people may have the expertise that's needed, but we hired each people to help us analyze and come to a decision. So, you know, I'm a favorite better, so I'm relying on them to come up with which one is the favorite.
Dr. Wazniewski.
Yeah, my comments were just going to be revolving around the completeness of the plans or options that are being presented to us. So I love the options as they're presented and the information and whatnot, but it seems like it's not cohesive in the sense that, you know, Robert was giving his numbers, but we didn't have anything to look at with regard to what David was trying to get at, some clarity of, you know, the projects and the timeline pushed into these other options. I would have liked to see that so that we could have a discussion surrounding the complete projects. So it makes it, it makes it a little bit difficult when trying to make a determination. But I agree with Mel in that I would like to have a recommendation from you all, based on the information coming from Robert and Tanya, what your opinion is on, on what would be the best course of action.
Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not about to quibble with anything that we've heard. But I, I am very concerned about the process that is, that is being attempted to bring us to a vote or decision today. We get documents a couple of days before this meeting, no commentary, just slides. We get a verbal convoluted discussion about what the, the plan is. How are we to perform due diligence on a very large financial decision with the amount of information that we got? And then it's, oh, by the way, I'd like you to vote today on this. That is just, I don't understand how we should be asked to be doing that. I think that we should, yes, rely on the superintendent's regulation, recommendation and give that proper diligence and examination, but not take it in fifteen seconds and make a snap decision on it. When I hear the word gamble involved in one option or the other, I go back to Kenny Rogers, the country singer, saying, you gotta know when to fold them as well as to hold them. I think we should take this information that we got today and we should perform due diligence on it and on seventeen March, make a decision. It's the same old, same old. Hurry up. Here's your information. We need a decision right now from you. Everyone who wants us to do that is not accountable to the taxpayers in this county. We are accountable for how the money's spent. So we've got to make the decision. We've got to live with the results. We've got to take the time to do it right.
Mr. Guyer.
I believe that Tanya and Robert and Dr. Rodriguez could bring to us at our next board meeting a very simple flow chart of what your recommendation is. And bring it to the, give it to us, if you can give it to us on Monday or so before, so we have some time to look at it. And then give us a very complete briefing on money flow, money in. I think that we could possibly make a decision next Tuesday. It depends on how well you can lay it all out for us. It could be, it could be done. I think it could be done simply. And if it's not, you know, if it's not reasonably acceptable to us, then, well, we can have it postponed for the next meeting. But I think you ought to give it a shot for Tuesday. And I'm unfortunately... And, uh, I'm unfortunately cursed with an economics background, and my economics background tells me that we are not, we are at the end or the top of a business cycle, and the cliff is approaching. So I, I really want to see a conservative look at, because I believe that we're going down. I believe that we're going to have ample opportunity to not only get more contractors who will be willing to bid our jobs, because the private market is gonna go down. You know, when you look at, when you look at the difference between short-term and long-term interest rates, and you look at that historically on the business cycle, it's basically a leading economic indicator that the business cycle is gonna be on the downward slope like it was here in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So, uh, that's my preference, but I, you know, I, I, you ask an economist, if, uh, why are you so smart? Why aren't you rich? Well, I, I ain't rich, so I can't, I, I've made, uh, the wrong forecasts in the past, but a conservative approach is probably the best thing to do right now, rather than they, I think it's kind of suspicious to try to buy all the bonds now, because I believe, my feeling is, it's gonna get better, not worse. So give us a good plan on Tuesday night, let us take a look at it, give it to us, as John's right, give it to us midday on Monday, so we can have a chance to look at it and come in with questions, and I think we could do something on Tuesday.
I'd be happy to do that, uh, Mr. Guyer, I will bring forward something on, on Monday, and then for, uh, if we have the ability to add to Monday, uh, Tuesday's agenda, we can certainly do that and provide it under for business action. This is a performance expectation, it is performance expectation two-point D. So I don't know if you're prepared to accept that today, or if you'd like to handle that also on Tuesday. Either one, I just wanted to be sure that we covered all of the items through that performance expectation. And again, I do, uh, would recommend, and I don't know what avenue to do this, but, uh, uh, an amendment to that performance expectation to add in arbitrage and premium conversations on an annual basis as well.
Dr. Waznewski.
You're in my head, I already added it to the discussion that we're gonna have about the OEs, so I added the language for that, so that we can marry them up.
Perfect, perfect.
Mr. Smith?
Also, uh, in the discussion, I noticed that, um, we were talking about schools and Hilton Head, Hilton Head Middle School is in the, um, is it, they're in the, uh, the box next? They're coming out, they're coming out next as well? Well, when Mr. Ading was up, was up there talking.
He was talking about the design for Hilton Head Middle School is in, included in the referendum.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
As you're making decisions, maybe Tuesday, maybe, um, on, on the seventeenth, I think would be your next board meeting, could y'all be thinking about what the new millage rate or limitation is that you're comfortable with? Because, um, Chad's number was... Thirty-six point six, under the thirty-eight, but, you know, we, in the past, y'all have had a, in the past, this board has had a strong view of keeping stable millage. And so if, um, if that's thirty-six point six is the new expectation, or you want it higher or lower, because that will have an impact on how Chad organizes or structures the repayment of eight percent and the, and the referendum.
Alrighty.
Thank y'all very much.
Since we're a little ahead, why don't we take a, a ten-minute break? Could everyone please have a seat again? Recession's over. Please sit. All right, next on the agenda is, uh, the board proposed budget for twenty twenty-one, and Tanya's gonna come forward.
Hello, um, okay.
Perhaps you could give a little background too of how you, you know, how we do this every year and how we get here and blah, blah, blah.
Okay, sure, sure. Um, every year, uh, we distribute the non-salary allocations, uh, budgets to all departments, including the board. So approximately, oh, I don't know exactly when we sent it out, about a month ago, these were distributed to every department and to Robin for, for the board's, uh, budget. And then we met, uh, Ms. Dr. Guatz, Robin and I met to review the expenditures to date, historical expenditures, and to make decisions line by line of what the board, next year's board budget should entail. With that, were included the, uh, there was a questionnaire, um, a budget distributed to every board member with an opportunity for your input, and I believe there's a handout today with a columnar, an Excel spreadsheet basically with the, um, projections or an input from several board members, which were taken into consideration during our meeting. So with that, uh, line by line, uh, we did go down every individual line item, um, one evening, and, uh, compiled the budget you have before you. Uh, it is a total of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is a reduction of six point five percent from the prior, from the two thousand twenty budget. Uh, the primary decrease in that budget was in legal fees. Uh, there was a, a reduction of fifty thousand dollars in that to match up with historical spending, and there were some slight, others were various slight increases, up or down, increases or decreases throughout the budget, and, um, I'll be happy to open that up for any discussion.
Mr. Darling.
I don't have an alternative amount, but I still would like to get someone from the, uh, South Carolina School Board Association here to discuss exactly what the components of the fifty-three thousand dollars in dues that we pay is comprised of, and what services we receive. We have, uh, I'll just, we got a little bit of detail last year in very broad strokes, well, it's dues. Uh, I'd like to go a little further than that.
Right, we, we do have an invoice each year from the School Board Association, and it, uh, it includes policy services, uh, hosting of the MicroScribe website, which is the poli, where the policies are held on the district's website, a searchable feature, that sort of thing, and insurance, I know that's protection for school board members, and the annual dues for the school board to participate in. So as far as the exact amounts, I don't have them right in front of me, but, uh, we can certainly come back to you with any further details you're looking for, and, or, or at the will... you're looking for and, or, or at the will of the board, request any, uh, conversation with the School Board Association.
Ms. Orshak?
How do we estimate our stipends? Some, some meetings go, you know, the, the predicted amount, uh, some extend to the four hours, which would be a, as opposed to a fifty dollar stipend, a hundred dollar stipend. How do we make that prediction in advance?
The stipends have, uh, the request is to maintain the same amount as the prior year. Uh, we looked at it more of an overall approach. Uh, some board members attend more stip- more meetings, some attend less, but from overall, we looked at the percentage and the, and the actuals that had been spent thus far this year, and you look to be exactly on track with spending. You were about sixty percent as of the end of January, I believe. So we still have, or possibly in the mid-fifties, I don't recall the exact percentage, in the fifty-five percentile, I would say. Um, it looked on track for the year not to overspend or underspend if there was no significant change between now and the end of the year. So we felt that take, holding that amount, the same, exact same would be, um, reasonable to expect for the next year.
So just a question, and this is probably a question for Robin. For each of our committees, do we, and I haven't checked, so forgive me, do we upload those videos, those audio videos promptly? Because this might allow us to cut back on our stipends as board members if we can't always travel. A lot of our committee meetings are held north of the Broad with, um, some in Bluffton and the rare occasion on Hilton Head. So I can't always travel north of the Broad for those committee meetings. So it's helpful to rely on watching those videos. It could also cut back on our stipends. So tell me your approach. They're uploaded, Sue, within a week. So for all of those committees online, any member of the public, any board member can go there and find all the meetings uploaded. And that's good for the public to know as well. Thank you.
Mr. Dowling?
I think that's a good idea, except I questioned, and this is not, this is no respect to you. Uh, I think the production quality of those videos, uh, is not of the caliber that would allow a, a board member to sit and catch the nuances and all of the discussion. People tend to at committee meetings, as they're sitting around a table, talk in a very quiet conversational tone to a recording device that is some distance away. And so sometimes it sounds like the boiler room with the Lut- Lutizian, the Titanic. And what you hear is the gears turning and the recording machine more than the actual words that are being spoken. So, uh, I would, I would love to see the quality of the committee, committee meetings be upgraded to the quality of the video of our board meetings. And then I think I would feel much more comfortable about s- sitting in my living room and watching them on a computer. But if I've got to, if I really got to find out the nuances and the details of what's going on, I have to be present.
So, Dr.
Mr. Smith?
Dr. Crosby, you said that you and Mrs., um, Dr. Gwadz and Robin met about this, about the, about this board budget? When did y'all meet?
Um, it was about two weeks ago, on a Monday evening from five-thirty to seven-thirty. I don't, I don't recall the exact date of that meeting, but it was a Monday on, at five-thirty.
Okay, okay, okay. Y'all me, and, and, and the juggle over every, everyone's, um, ev- ev- everyone's, uh, proposal that was sent in as well?
We did review, we did receive that input and we can, made that in, took that in consideration when making the decisions about this budget, yes, ma'am.
And the, and the, and the reason why I'm asking too is because the fact that, you know, we were just discussing a, a proposal, uh, a few minutes ago, and those proposals are given to us, uh, two and three days before. And we're expecting to make decisions, and I just was kind of shocked that y'all met, that y'all met and went o- went over, went over all, went over this. And, uh, yeah, I actually had time to, uh, process this information. I was just wondering how we could do it there, but we can do it on, when we're dealing with some of these bids and some other stuff. I mean, I was, I was just, ju- just wa- just wondering, just, excuse me, thank you.
Well, let me just add to that. This is what the board requested, uh, in advance, was that they wanted the opportunity for everybody to provide input. As you can see, uh, about half the members provided input. And, uh, and then the, the, the way that it would happen again would be that, uh, Tanya, Robin and I would meet, taking into consideration what, uh, had been, um, uh, uh, gets submitted by, by board members. So we were doing what the board asked. Mr. Dowling?
Uh, I didn't he see any mention about us building on, to approve this today anyway. I thought this was an FYI. Prior notice.
Ms. Robine?
Um, I just want to say that when I did this, I learned a lot. I had to ask Robin a lot of questions, like, why is this, um, uh, technology, why is that so much money? And she said, well, that includes what we pay to the county channel and that type of, um, thing. And I think that was the category, but at any rate, I, um, by sitting there and going through this exercise and trying to figure it out, I learned a lot. When I looked at our, you know, our budget for what we spend on food, I'm like, okay, I'm going to actually break it down and I'm going to say it should be catering so much for breakfast and so much for lunch, and that's how I came up with my input. I see that the audit services, it says I didn't put anything in, that was certainly an oversight on my part because I know that we, we do pay for those audits. But I, I just wanted to interject that it was a learning experience for me because, um, these categories sound like you know what they are, and then you look at the amount that's been typically spent in those, and I was like, whoa, why are we spending that much money in that category? And then, um, Ms. Cushionberry was able to explain to me what other things are included in there. So I, I thought the process for me was good. I have a better understanding. That's just my.
And Ms. Orshak?
So was legal, um, looked at and reduced primarily because in the past somehow the board's legal budget has included some activities from other areas of the, the, um, administration? Has, is, did that come into play when we reduced the, the amount allotted for legal?
Absolutely. Um, last year, the budget was built on an expectation, as, as we had done in the past, that, um, there were two, only two areas that included legal services, human resources and the board's budget. There was no really distinguishment, uh, distinguishing between what attorneys the board was using and the administration was using for matters other than personnel. So we separated personnel matters, but any other matters that the administration needed a tr- uh, legal services for were all built into the board's budget. Since there was a desire about a year ago to, to split those out, um, that warrants the need to decrease the board's budget because the reduction of spending there has occurred. And there will, you will see other areas of the budget where we will need to put, build a budget. For example, a small amount in finance, for example, for any financial matters I may have to seek advice upon. Or easements, for example, uh, maybe in, uh, Mr. Auding's budget, uh, and some other areas like that. So, um, we will not, uh, we will need to shift a few of those budgets over to another area to accommodate the, the change from about a year ago. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Fidrich?
Thank you.
Ms. Crosby and, and probably Ms. Cushionberry as well. When I was reviewing this, um, this weekend, um, and I just was, I was looking at the two thousand nineteen actuals for the travel, for local travel, and when I totaled up for the, the total for local, it came close to like twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars. But then the projection comes out to about twenty-five. And so I'm just wondering, how did your, our two thousand nineteen actuals inform our twenty-twenty projections?
Are you referring to the actual projection column here or the, okay?
Yeah, so, so Ms. Crosby, just, I mean, I, I thought the purpose of doing this, and, um, when I, when I submitted my recommendations for the budget, they were much more global, like reduced amount of food, you know, instead of anything in particular. But, um, but so then, you know, when I, when we received this, I just started playing with the numbers. And so when I added up the two thousand nineteen actuals for local travel, okay, I just focused on the local travel. And I didn't write the numbers down on this, I, um, wrote it down at home, but I, I came close to twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars for actuals, okay? Then you look at the twenty-twenty, um, projection, okay? Which is, uh, it, it came to about five thousand dollars more. And I, so, so it's much more of a, just a, a process question. How much did the actuals, the two thousand nineteen actuals, inform the decisions on the twenty-twenty budget?
Um, we are looking at the travel as a whole, so not just individually, locals, in-state and out-of-state. So when I'm, when we're building a budget, we generally match those together because they could easily be, or with board, um, input, have transfers between an in-state, that someone may not attend a national conference and that may, you know, allow, you know, funding to be able to supplement the local travel. So I look at it as a whole and, and, and realize the actual spending so far this year, what percentage we've spent and what we are expecting, what we expect to spend, uh, throughout the remainder of the year. So in, in the areas that we looked at, it looked as if there would, would not be a need for an increase in the tra- overall travel area.
That, that makes sense because I really was, um, disaggregating it, and so I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For local travel, when it's not broken down individually, your local travel includes all your legislative breakfasts, your lunches, those local, um, community things that you support, that is your local travel for the whole board.
Would anybody like to speak that hasn't already said something? Mr. Dowling?
While we're on the subject of board budget presentations, yesterday we began a discussion, uh, about the dining officer and a couple of us felt would be more appropriate for this morning, uh, because of the board present, uh, budget presentation. So I'm, I have an approach to offer. I believe that this approach will bring about additional discipline and clarity to the budget deliberations and improve the public's ability to determine that district spending supports the Board of Education's priorities for the district. Accordingly, I moved that the board direct superintendent to present to the board and to the public the overall budget broken into three distinct and separate segments. Number one, the instructional budget. Number two, the operational budget. Number three, the administration budget.
I'll second.
That seems to me out of order. We're talking right now about just the board's budget. You just told me a minute ago that we couldn't vote on this, but now you're making a motion that's about the budget in general. And our topic right now is the propos- board proposed budget for twenty-twenty-one. So I, I don't think that that motion, uh, should be entertained at the present time.
Okay, I appeal your, I appeal your decision. I believe that my motion is for going forward and therefore is germane to our discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Orshak?
Thank you for recognizing me. Yesterday we discussed it. Um, there seemed to be some initial support for it. This idea, um, absent a vote and a proper motion, um, it was suggested that we might tackle it the following day in regard to any items on the agenda that dealt with the budget. So, um, that's just some background. Dr. Gwadz, you were not here to hear that, you know, exchange, but that was just, just provides a little bit of background for your understanding.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, I mean, I, I'm not sure about the timing or whatever. I think it's a, a very interesting proposal and motion, but as far as it timing, but can I ask Ms. Crosby, what does that mean to you? So if you, you hearing that, what did, how would that make your presentation of the budget different than how you present, have, have done it in the past?
In past years, for several years actually, I present something called the pyramids. Um, and the base of the pyramid is instruction and instructional programs, uh, support programs and other programs. So, and then we provide not only the visual of that, but the detail behind that and comparisons to multiple years. Broken down for instructional categories would be kindergarten, elementary, middle school, high school, special, each special, special education, guidance, counseling, media specialists and so on. So I see the motion as something similar to what I'm, um, what we have done in the past, but perhaps I can enhance what I've done to, uh, provide various categories, um, salaries, benefits, software, supplies and that sort of thing, rather than perhaps the comparison of previous years. So, and, and, uh, we've already had conversation, Mr. Murphy and I, about including FTEs in those categories, so full-time equivalent positions in each of those categories. So I think we can take what we already have and build on that to be a little, uh, just explain things a little differently in this year to be able to, uh, we, and it may require categorizing a few things a little differently, but I think we can, I think we can work with it.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mister, could you clarify the last thing you said, Mister Dowling?
Clarify the what?
The last thing you said, you said.
Well, I, I have to raise a point of order. You determined, you ruled that this is not in, yet you're allowing discussion on it.
So let's take a vote.
Yes, that's why, that's why I want, I want to be clear.
So the, the vote will have to be by majority to, we can say uphold the chair's decision that this is out of order at the present time based on our agenda. That's, that's the motion.
Not exactly.
Then say it the way you'd like it, Mr. Dowling.
The notion of an appeal is to overturn your ruling, not to uphold it.
Okay. All right, so those who vote in favor of this.
Are we having discussion on this?
No, I'm trying to explain what, what the voting would mean. So if you vote in favor, you want this discussion now under board budget.
Okay, I'd like to have discussion on this, yeah.
Correct?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and I'd like to have, to have a discussion on this.
So all those in favor of this discussion, this motion, um, uh, to proceed at this point, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, uh, nine-two. No, excuse me, eight-two. Okay, so now go ahead.
Okay, so Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Dowling a question? So, Mr. Dowling, does what, um, Ms. Crosby just explained about an enhanced report of the budget, does that comport with what you're requesting?
Well, yeah, because this is just a concept, okay? Uh, we talked yesterday about the terms that showing the public a pie chart with seventy-two percent of the money going to instructor really doesn't illustrate to them that we are targeted in student achievement to be the priority. It also gives us a discipline where if we vet and improve the instructional segment first, then take the operation and show, and require the operation, show how the operations budget is supporting the administration budget, uh, the instructional budget, then we have established that we are targeting our spending according to our priorities. So, and the administration would be anything else, finance, HR. And it, I believe that showing it to the public this, using it ourselves, put some discipline into the process, showing it that the public that way identifies what our priorities are and connects the spending to the priorities. And I would ask the superintendent what he thinks of this.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Well, first of all, one, I have no objection to that. It seems like a good idea to me to, uh, strategic. Well, first of all, one, I have no objection to that. It seems like a good idea to me to, uh, strategic approach to, to looking at our budget. So, uh, student achievement is our top priority. So, uh, it would show how everything else is in support of student achievement. And, and it would make it clear.
Mr. Guyer?
I use the same methodology to build a budget for a community college. And it was, I was the first one to do it that way. And a lot of very interesting things came out when I looked at what we were paying for instructors, what we were paying for, uh, supplies and so on in the instructional area. And then built it from there to the administration, or to the operations and then to the administration. And it really made me focus on the classrooms first to make sure that we were funding them properly. And then we saw if there was funds available in the total budget, how that pyramid, because it is a pyramid. But going from the bottom up, I think is a very valuable, uh, exercise for budget managers and for, uh, for the leadership to look at. So I, I'm fully in favor of, of this approach.
Would anybody else like to speak that has not already spoken? Mr. Dowling?
To reinforce your point, Mr. Guyer, uh, last year, it was only an accident that we found out that the instructional budget was paying for some athletic supplies. And when that was only accidentally, it's built in now, if we use this approach, that it'll be glaringly obvious.
And can I ask a question? How does this relate to the board budget that we're looking at? How does that fit into this?
It relates to the presentation and the board determined that this was in order to discuss. So it, we, it, we received a presentation on the board's budget. Going forward, we'll receive board presentations in the following format: instructional, operation, and then administration. So that's the appropriate time to talk about it. And the board has already determined that it's the appropriate time to talk about it when they overturned your decision.
I understand that. So you're saying that under the board budget, we're going to have this broken down like that as well?
No.
Okay.
It's not departmental budgets, it's per se. It's categorical. Instructional budget, all the expenses paid in instructional budget. Our budget would fall under the administration budget.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
I, I know, I agree totally that it's a good concept. My only concern is when we have those overlapping categories. And I suppose you have an overlapping category, then that kind of indicates the, the value of it. And, and, and something that's not, you know, absolutely necessary that's in one of the other categories, then those are the cuttable items. And, 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 and concept, that's what I, that's where I view the concept from my perspective. Everything is instructional and directed towards instructional, and if you're important, you're linked. If you're not that important, you're further removed. And you should be removed if you're absolutely further removed. That, that'd be my, why I would, I would vote in favor of that, uh, concept.
Mr. Dowling?
Just a comment to Mel's comment. Yeah, the, the slicing and dicing that takes place in order to separate the parts of the budget in those three categories will identify places that overlap. And that may result in, in a cross-charging internally between budgets that goes on to keep straighter, keep more track of things as the management of the finances continues during the course of the year.
All right, can you put the motion up there? The motion is to move that the board direct the superintendent to present to the board and to the public the district budget in three distinct and separate, thank you, segments. One, instructional budget, two, operations budget, and three, administration budget. All those, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So now how are we going to dispose of the board's budget? Yes, Ms. Orshak?
I, I still have a question, getting back to that topic at hand. The out-of-state travel. What is that typically comprised of? What exactly was our out-of-state travel and were forms submitted by board members?
The out-of-state travel last year consists of, it's a total, it was a total pot of $13,000. And what it was is when we had the National School Board Association, the conferences, board members were asked who would like to attend, um, that-
Is that out of state?
That's out of state.
Okay, and where, is that the national?
That's the national, that's in Chicago this year.
Okay.
So the out-of-state travel is anything out of the state of South Carolina. So if you go to the National School Boards Association Conference, if you go to the National, um, School Safety Conference, that was in Orlando, that's what, out of state. The out-of-state travel is in one pot. And so it's divided out to the number of board members. We normally, um, it also includes Molly and I going to board docs, because that's out of state.
Gotcha.
So instead of, um, putting it for all 13 people, it's figured out for six board members and Molly and myself, if one, one or both of us go to the board docs conference.
Okay, and just a process question. Board members have to submit a request form because it is more costly, these out-of-state.
Right.
And, um, I think we took board action a while back, and I'm not certain if it's going to come up later in the day when we look at our, um, our, our manual, our revised governance, uh, manual, if, if that is in there, the board action, because we did discuss this before. There, there was some degree of accountability where board members would have to bring back and share what they learned if they are going out of state. Robin, i- is it possible for you to have available to board members who would request those travel, uh, request forms from 19 and 20? Because as a board member, I mean, I, I haven't chosen to travel out of state for any of these, but that's just a personal choice. But I do believe we did have some board discussion and board members were supposed to bring back, you know, some information from those events. So, um, first I'd like to understand who's going where, I'm just curious. And what we're learning from the, because it's a significant expense, you know, it's, it's $13,000. And I'm not saying it's not worthwhile, it may be very worthwhile. But, um, I don't know what we've, we've gotten to show from it, so.
In the shirt.
Would those forms be available if I come to see, see them?
I don't, we don't have a form.
We don't?
We have a, where at your deus, we give you a little sheet and ask you if you want to attend so-and-so's conference. So that would be the form that we ask you, and if you say yes, you want to go to the conference, we make arrangements for you to go to the conference. That's, it's a little sheet that, any conference or meetings that we ask, we put- and we ask you to check and we place it in front of you when any conference or any meetings come up. And that's how we find out who's attending what. So there's not a formal form-
Okay.
That we use.
Okay, misunderstood. I'm probably thinking of another form. It's, it's for the district, so-
So it's a travel, I mean, we have the travel form that they changed on the travel form, and it's selected if you're going out of state and if it's staff development. That's on your travel form. That had been revised.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, but, but that comes after you, as a board member, say, yes, I want to go to wherever you want to go, and we fill that out.
So the offerings don't have to come through the district? You don't have to say such-and-such of, um, conferences being offered, do you want to go? Any board member can say, I want to go, I want to go to Chicago next month because they're having a great, you know, a very informative conference and where we, that's going to be paid for? How does, again, I've never done this, so I'm just asking if somebody has a point of reference here. Has any board member requested?
Well, one thing I can say is, so in 19, if we, remind me, I'm pretty certain nobody had out-of-state travel because the National School Board Association Conference was at the same time we were doing the interviews for the superintendent. So I don't think-
So nobody went anywhere last year.
-anybody went to the National School Board Association Conference last year.
Correct.
And in the past, prior to that, Robin said that the practice was basically alternating years. So half the board members could go one year and then half the next year. So you could end up going every other year if you, if you so desired. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, let's see, Dr. Wisnewski?
I remember what you're talking about, Ms. Orshak. I think that came about because I actually was thinking of going to a conference, um, last year. That was an education policy conference, um, and it was out of state. I ended up not going to that. But that's where that whole conversation came about of, um, board members giving kind of a overview of what that, what they gleaned from those experiences. So I think that's what she's referencing.
Ms. Robar? Ms. Robar?
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Dowling was next.
I, I think the question is, is there a pre-approval and then a post-approval? The statement that's on the travel reimbursement form is after the fact. You put in for the expense, you check that it was out of state, and then you check why you went. Student achievement or yada, yada, yada. But I don't think, I'm not sure if the intent was ever to set up a pre-approval. If the intent was to set up a pre-approval, I don't think we have one in place. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Ms. Orshak?
So it says, and maybe I'm reading the chart wrong, so please correct me if I have this incorrect. So 2019 actual, uh, travel slash out, travel out of state, there were, you know, you have a couple grand there, you know, two, $3,000, $4,000. What was that, if we didn't do any out-of-state travel in 2019?
Earl Campbell went to the National Safety, um, Conference that was in Orlando. And, um, last year-
Board docs.
Board docs was Molly and myself. Did we go last year?
Last year it was one of you, I think.
Okay, Molly went last year. In, in 2019, Molly went to the board docs. Earl went to the National, um, Safety Conference in Orlando.
Okay, so we did do some out-of-state travel.
Right, but the, the big advantage-
I misunderstood.
Was the National School Boards Association Conference that was planned was during the same time we were doing the superintendent conference. So, um, that was not attended by any board member last year.
So what, Mr. Dowling raises the question, if any one of us see a, a worthwhile, um, learning experience as a board member, all we need to do is ask, uh, all expenses paid. Is that correct? I mean, I don't, I don't think that we do have any pre-approval process in place. And it might be something the board might want to consider.
Uh, the travel document is actually, uh, for district employees and, and since the board complies with the travel forms, is a request in advance. So at the top, there are two boxes. One says request and one says reimbursement. So that document is intended to inform, um, an approver to, uh, be knowledgeable about the entire costs of what the travel would entail, uh, per diem mileage, hotel and registration fees, and any parking or ancillary costs as well. So we do have a, a travel form that is used for in advance and approval of that travel. And then any reimbursements that would entail is the exact same form that comes back with any reimbursements for mileage and per diems as well.
We, we use that, um, request for what, when you do in-state. So when you go to your meetings in Columbia, when you go to your meetings in Charleston, when you go to any meetings outside of local, it's the same. So you get a request so that when you go to TUDAC or when you go to the others, that request is put in and when we pay the registration. So that is a pre-approved thing as you indicate that you're going to attend a conference.
All right, I think Mr. Mel Campbell, then Mr. Strippinger.
Yeah, I got, uh, two things, or last first. The, um, I, I don't think the board, my personal opinion is, I don't think the board ought to be restricted to, to, uh, or allow the, the leverage that the, that the administrators or the district allow, district employees. I think we ought to either have our own policy in place with travel and what we do, and we ought to vet it ourselves from the board perspective. And I think, but their policy for traveling and ED and all the other things, that'd be tied into us. And, uh, that's, that's, that's that thing. The other thing is the board's budget. I also think the board budget ought to be separated from the district's budget and shown as one piece overall. I don't think our budget should be included in how much money we're spending to educate the child as opposed to how much money we're spending in governance. But that, that's my opinion. I, I just want to hear some feedback from that from others.
And Mr. Strippinger?
When a board member requests to go out of state, who approves it?
The board chair. If it's the board chair going out of state, the superintendent signs off on the board chairs.
Yeah, I just wanted to finish up the loop there.
Good to know, that's, thank you, that's helpful.
All right, Ms. Robar and then Mr. Dowling?
Um, I just want to comment, Ms. Orshak, I do, we did have a conversation about people coming back and reporting when they, and we've done that since people, now, there haven't been any out-of-state ones, but I specifically remember that we had somebody that had been at a conference and asking them to give a report. And I, I can't remember-
Mr. Campbell came back and reported what happened at the school safety conference when he went to Orlando. So Mr. Campbell did come back and, and share the information.
And, and I think there've been some others. I think I may have attended something in-state or whatever and, and came back. But I do remember that conversation and I do remember that we did have reports, so we are, yeah.
Mr. Dowling?
If advanced approval is requested on the travel form, who is approving the request?
The board chair approves all of the board members' requests. Uh, Dr. Rodriguez approves the, the board chair's request.
Does, is that supported by policy that the board chair determines who can go where?
I don't think that's-
I think that should go in the parking lot.
Mr. Smith?
Um, I was going to say, I do echo everything that Mr. Campbell say. Uh, I do agree with what he said. Uh, he, I, actually, I, I, when I first got on the board, those, those were some things that I brought to the board and I guess at, at that time, I think we were in budget season and we weren't kind of overlooking, but those were, those were two points that I, I currently have brought up as well. And also, um, the, the, I would like to check on, check on the notion of that the, the, I know the chair signs off on everybody, but the superintendent signed off on her. I think that's, to me, that's a little, that's backwards. I don't think that the superintendent should be signing off on the chair's travel. That, I, I, that, that, um, e- even that was done 20 years, uh, I don't think is correct. I mean, so I, I think that's a, a process that we need to look into. I think that could cause some conflict. I just don't think that the chair should sign off on the, um, on the, uh, I mean, the superintendent should, the superintendent, excuse me, should sign off on the, on the, on the, on the chair's travel. And, and, and there's no shade to the chair. I, I just think that, I just don't think it, it, things should be handled in that, in that manner.
Ms. Orshak?
Almost every other day, we come up with a, something that should be a, a, a policy, and this is one such example. So until we get to that point, I think we ought to, um, wait and have that discussion then, when we, we develop such a policy. I, I agree with your thoughts, though. And I think in regard to Mel's question, Mr. Dowling suggested that the board's budget of the three sections of the presentation would fall under administration, correct? That was your suggestion there?
Yeah, as a separate piece.
As a separate piece, we got one component of it, yeah.
That makes sense.
Dr. Wisnewski?
So when we do get to the policy manual, we can definitely revisit this conversation. But I did want to point out that under the expenses and the way that our current policy is written, it does say that any amount spent over the annual limit becomes the sole responsibility of the individual board member. So we do have a budgeted amount, and anything that goes over that is the responsibility of the individual board member. And I know we're talking about pre-approval as well, but I just wanted to point that out, that there is mechanisms in place to, um, make sure it doesn't, yeah.
I'm done. Mr. Dowling?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, but I believe that statement is meant to say if you spend more than the per diem amount, you're responsible for the difference, not- you spend more than the per diem amount, you're responsible for the difference, not the budgeted amount. Is that correct?
I believe it is the per diem amount. I'm not sure. I have to reread it. I'm not sure.
If you're allowed 60 bucks a night for a hotel and you spend 85, you're on the hook for 25. That's how I took that to read.
Mr. Smith?
I do believe that Mr. Dowling is correct on that. But also, another thing that, now, basically, I was going to say that also, I think that, however, I do like to go into some of the South Carolina High School, the, what's the name of the school board conferences? But one thing, I don't know about some of the other members, but one thing that I do notice about some of the ample of these conferences that begin to concern me, I guess maybe this is something that maybe, you know, a conversation with them is that some of the information regarding the steps that we as board members take, I think that a lot of it is done by sponsorship and by support of, supporting towards superintendents and not board members. I think that these conferences, they teach a lot of times that, and it concerns me that we as board members should just let the superintendent run the board. I mean, I'm not sure about how some people perceive some of it, but, you know, going to some of these conferences and even being a part of these school board association kind of concerns me, you know, even with the fact that even going into the situation regarding my grievances, I think that the chair contacted the president of the School Board Association and got some direction. And I think that that was a little, you know, going back to that same thing that my concern. So, I just, you know, I'm not, I mean, I would definitely like some feedback in that, how we feel about that. Because as Mr. Dowling said, I would definitely like to understand how they break down the cost of it.
We're a little out of order here. Mr. Smith, my advice to you would be to fill out the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference Survey. You've got one if you attended, and I saw you there. So, fill it out. Put that stuff down. That's what that survey is for. And any member of this board, since we're members of the South Carolina School Board Association, you can call the South Carolina School Board Association for questions or advice or pamphlets or whatever you want. I mean, that's, it's not just the chair can call there. Any board member can call there.
Thanks for clarification on that.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
So, back to the business at hand, the board proposed budget. My question, I guess, you know, as we go forward with the full budget, this fits into the school district budget. We don't have a, you know, we can't separate it completely because our money comes from the pot of money that the school district gets. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm sure everyone understands that. It comes from that money. So, we can indicate it as a part of the administrative cost, which I think is the appropriate place for it to go. So, at this point, I would just, it sounds to me like people still have questions or I don't know how we can move on from this today and put it on another agenda for a voting. I guess my question is, do we always approve our budget? Is that something that we've routine, does the school, or do we approve our budget as a separate thing from the rest of the budget?
Hey, I can comment.
Yep.
I think that under what we discussed and approved, the board budget is going to be a component of the administrative budget. So, the time to tackle that is when we vet the administrative budget, which in the order of priorities will be last. Okay? There's no, it's the cart before the horse now if we're talking. Not that the board's budget is a huge percentage of the administrative cost, but there's a discipline involved. If we're going to look at the administration in terms of the total administration, we shouldn't be plucking pockets of it out to approve. And that's what the board budget is.
Mr. Mel Campbell, then Dr. Wisnewski?
I disagree. I agree that we have to have a fixed amount, but in terms of what we're trying to produce, unless we have guidance, and I think that's one of the things that we always say, we ought to governance. But the governance don't have any funds to operate. Let's say the budget is vetted before we get to the board budget. Everything is used up. And there's nothing left for us to do business, even a meeting, going to be able to afford.
We determine that when we determine the budget.
And I think we ought to determine that, I mean, yeah, we determine that early, earlier than anything else. I mean, at least the basic of the budget. So, I think that's us to decide and we set the tone for everything else.
It's called a line item transfer. Now, it happens mid-year. They find a line item that they have money on. They can put it into the one that's-
I just decide, I'm not deciding the process of how we get the money in there. I know we, I'm just deciding that we ought to be separate from all of the running of the district in terms of how-
Oh, you could do that, but you still have to approve it as part of a budget.
Right.
So, Dr. Wisnewski? Ms. Orshak?
Previous board, speaking of our stipends, entertained the idea of removing this stipend. And since we're already paid by the electorate, what is it, 7,500 a year? And those conversations have taken place in the past. Why are we getting the stipend on top of, you know, our base pay? And so, that, you know, need be, that might be something this board, your new board, might want to look at sometime in the future. There are pros and cons to that. Just a suggestion down the road.
So, I have a question for Ms. Crosby. So, is there any, so, it seems like the consensus is that the board budget will go under administration, but as a separate line item. So, do we need to take action? Is there an urgency to take action on it or just we'll just go with what we're doing? I mean-
So, the urgency is for me to compile the entire budget as a whole. So, we already have this requested budget in the, into the municipal, in the municipal database, as well as the departments and schools and that so on. So, I'll move forward with the information I have right now to build the entire budget. This budget, in my world, goes through four more layers. Administrative level, board level, county council level, and approved. So, we have time to make adjustments. As we move through each kind of approval area, then I may roll it to the next budget and I can see the differences between those levels. So, I will continue on with the current information. If the board, there is no requirement that I'm aware of that the board votes on its budget separately, but it certainly has the authority to do that if you choose. We can do it now, you can do it later, you know, whatever you, we choose to do. It will not change the work or delay my work in building the entire budget and bringing it forward to you.
Ms. Robine?
I just have one more comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Tricia, when we, last year, went through the budget and we made suggested cuts to the board, wasn't one of the cuts, didn't we take some from our budget?
Yes.
So, there's still time to do that. It's just my point.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We can start the review of the coherent governance policy, the ad hoc committee's work. So, David, I'll turn that to you.
Yes, ma'am. You have in the folder, I think, all the artifacts of the committee's work. Today, we're going to go through the product that the committee was about, could achieve in the 20 hours-
Can you put your mouth closer to the microphone?
In the 20 or 25 hours that we worked on this. Not a completed or polished product. This is not a first reading. This is just showing the board where we are, make sure we're going in the right direction and getting direction on where to go from here. So, Dr. Wisnewski will walk us through.
So, what you all have in your packet here are a few items. You have a page with the quadrants and the work that was done and compiled that puts in our present policies into different quadrants. We also matched up the PEs with, into the OE section, so you'll see some additions there as well. You'll see items that were deleted and items that we believe belong in a handbook. See, we also have a list of parking lot items. We had some conversation today and I added a few on there as well. So, as we go through, you may see the addition there for that. And then you have your table of contents as well that kind of shows things that were added, deleted, replaced, where things moved. So, as you go through this lovely 62 page manual here, on the front page, you'll see it's highlighted because highlights are where we believe conversation needs to be had or we need to delete that information and replace our own. So, on the front, it has the highlight with the dates. We would put our own dates there. Moving through, Ms. Fidrich wrote and edited the introduction. It's to give an outline and also has a visual that Mr. Strippinger worked on that shows the, basically a flow chart of how the mission, mission, vision and beliefs drive the strategic plan, policies, everything is derived from the top. So, I don't know. Pardon? Go ahead.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Since this isn't a first reading, do we, if we have questions about why this or why that or why this, we're doing that today or are we saving that for a first reading discussion?
I would think today would be a good time. If you've had the chance to look through and you have some questions, now would be a good time because it would shorten the amount of time that we do on a first reading.
Okay. I have a question. On the introduction, the financial stewardship is not mentioned in the first paragraph. That is a task that is chartered to us by law, that we are responsible for the taxpayers' money. And I think that should be, get some notice in our introduction about what we're all about.
John, the first paragraph, as you can see-
Nice and loud, Patricia, please.
Okay. The first paragraph, as you can see, is taken right from the Good Governance is a Choice book. So, that was just a quote that was from there. So, where would you like to see that financial oversight added? Given that it is part of the operational expectations?
I think it is of paramount importance and they're sure, or should be in the very first statement that we make about why we exist. And I think it should fit our needs rather than write out of the book because the voters didn't elect the board, they elected us.
Oh, and that was not my intention to say that. I just didn't want to, this was the exact quote. So, I didn't want to then add anything to it that was not then cited by the location from which that quote came. So, I'm just asking you, where, what would you like to see added? Because that is the-
Right in that paragraph.
And say the wording again. How would you like to, what would you like to-
The board focus is centered on student achievement and the responsible financial management of the school district.
So, we could add that as a separate line outside of the original quote.
I see also in that introduction, I guess you'd say at the first, just below where you have the four numbers down to results, you have, that next sentence says, has the finances in it.
Yeah, I was going to provide a little additional clarity to it. So, the introduction serves as explaining the coherence governance model and how this book is laid out. So, it gives a roadmap to someone who's opening this up and they're looking and they're trying to understand how we operate. So, that's why it lists out those four subcategories. And then in that, I guess you would call it maybe the third paragraph down, it says, coherent governance policies are the board's plan to govern, manage BCSD affairs on a cost-effective basis. So, it does cover that financial component that you're talking about, Mr. Dowling. It's just a little bit further down there. And this is to basically give someone an overview of what they're looking at when they first open up this book.
Ms. Orshak, and then Mr. Mel Campbell?
Just a process question. The committee has an even number of members, four. Is that correct? Okay. So, I mean, the function of the committee is to bring recommendations to the board solely. And at some point, the committee will have to vote. How will the committee approach tie votes with an even number on the committee? Was it, Madam Chair, did you originally put five and one drop down or did you form the committee with an even number of members?
As I've already stated, I formed it with every member that desired to be on the committee. And that was four.
Four, okay. So, that answers that question. So, how will the committee, what will the process be for addressing any tie votes going forward on recommendations that you're voting on and bringing forward to the board?
We would report to the board that there was a tie vote.
And that it failed and no recommendation happened? That would be the outcome of that.
Say it was, it was a split decision on this and so it's coming to the board for a decision.
You can't make a recommendation to the board if, you know what I'm saying? So, in other words-
Let me try it again.
Yeah.
We would come to the board and say, we had a split vote, so it's coming to the board for a decision because we didn't make one. So, we're not making a recommendation.
Okay.
We're just bringing it to the board and saying, we couldn't decide, so-
So, we have no recommendation for you if the board wants to make a motion, another member? Okay.
So, we didn't do it.
All right. That's a, it was just a process question. I didn't know how you would cross that bridge when you got to it, if you got to it.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
Going to comment on the introduction. I think it's in line with what our business is with student achievement. How we get to that does mean managing and pointing and doing some other things, but student achievement is what our, we're trustees in terms of getting that done.
Mr. Smith?
I do agree with that, Mr. Campbell. But my question was going to be from Mr. Dowling. When, the sentence that you said you wanted to add, could you repeat that again? The sentence that you said that you want to add, could you repeat it again?
I don't follow. What? They took note of what they-
I know, but that's, I'm just asking you to repeat the sentence. That's all I'm asking. I'm asking you for a reason if you would just repeat the sentence.
The reason I-
No, he's asking you, repeat what you asked or you wanted added.
My, what I asked was, why does the introduction not reference financial stewardship?
Okay.
Because, and here's my point to you and Mel. Student achievement is our number one priority. We're in business to make sure that happens. However, you can achieve that prudently with finances or you can waste a lot of money along the way and still come up with the same result. The taxpayers of the county expect us to achieve student achievement goals within, with prudent and conservative expenditures of tax money. That's all. So, I'm not, I get up, I take umbrage at the inf, at the implication that to talk about money is to take away from the emphasis on student achievement. I think that they are, we have to help students achieve, but we have to do it in a financially sound manner.
Ms. Fidrich?
Um, Chair, if I may?
I wouldn't, actually, I wouldn't finish it. I was going to, he get done, then in the response to why I asked him to write, ask him for that question. The reason why I asked- The reason why I asked him, and he, he didn't really answer the question was because he, what, what Mr. Dowling said was that the board has, is a state law said that the board has a responsibility. And that is what I was wanting to see. Because what it says, it says that basically that we're doing that, but does it say in, in, in the opening that it is, it is the law and that that's our job? So, that, so that, that's a little different versus just saying that, yeah, that's our responsibilities. But you put a more, a more, a more emphasis on it, so it, so there's no questions. As like, some of us said, as in, it's, when we, when we're doing certain things, certain things, we use words like shall or, or, or different things that said that, no, that, that is the, that is their job. That's our job, physical responsibility. And, and that was the, the piece I was wondering whether that should have been in there stating that that's, that's, that's the law, that's our job in, in, in the, in the opening. That, that was my point.
Ms. Fidrich?
Gotcha.
Um, Chair, I'd like to respond to Mr. Dowling. Point well taken. And, and at our next policy one, if, I will, I will craft something where it just says that much more strongly and apparently. And it's gonna come in for the board again, so I will do so.
Thank you.
You're good.
Okay, so continuing on past the introduction, what you will see is it enters into GC1. Again, you, you notice any frequency of monitoring is going to be on these pages. There has been some formatting. There may be additional formatting that needs to be done. Again, this is not a completely clean version. There's been formatting done. We've tried to align some of the, the language and the terminology used. And I'd like to, should we go through the parking lot items actually? Instead of going through this, you know, individual item by item, because this isn't necessarily a first reading. I think we should go over the parking lot items first. So, you see that governance parking lot items list. Number one is the role of the handbook and method for revisions and updates. That's really kind of two things. But to explain the role of the handbook, that would be previous policies or items that we felt served better in a handbook format. They weren't necessarily policies. They were maybe feel goods or they didn't necessarily fit under this governance model.
So, I'd like to add to that. When I attended your meeting, it was clear too that that seemed to be where you were gonna have what was the law as well with the state statutes. And not, I guess, repeat everything, but so.
So, those are listed here.
Yeah.
As well as on the table of contents list. Anything that was moved to the handbook should be listed there. So, if anybody had any questions about the handbook and its purpose.
Go ahead.
I just, like, so I, when we first started this, I went through and started the handbook and typed it up. And these are the types of things, I'll just go over the headings that, so you don't have to look up everything. These are the types of things that were in the handbook, like board role and job description. One of the things, the law requires the board to discharge certain duties and confers upon it legislative, executive, and judicial powers. And then the laws would be listed, the regular term of office for each board member, those types of, of things. Governance commitment, where we talk about the executive session meetings will be limited to those matters allowed by South Carolina law. And the four ways that we can go into executive session are actually listed. Board policies, the general statement, the board considers policy development one of its chief functions. The content, the agenda set, you know, what, how the agenda is arranged, call to order, executive session if necessary. Board meeting minutes and materials. And then, let's see. The board member cost, we had in there, shall not request travel reimbursement. These were just some of the things, school board meetings, work sessions, board meeting. So, those were the types of things that, and you can look down here, the, what, where they were. But those were the types of things that were being parked in, put in a handbook. Because as new board members, I think we looked at things and say, you know, what's really good to know? It's something we should know, but it's not necessarily policy per se. It's background information that we need to have. And John, you were with us when we were talking about that, so you may want to jump in.
Yes, I was. And an alternative name to the handbook was frequently asked questions, which may be, may be more illustrative to people wondering what it's about.
So, I think what we need to handle with regard to the handbook is the method by which we conduct revisions or updates to that item. Because our policy manual has a lot more strict rules with regard to how we add policies. The handbook, we may not want to require such stringent requirements. There may be additions that need to be made because of new state laws or changes to state laws. So, we just wanted to open that up for conversation at the board level.
Ms. Orshak?
So, I struggle with the scope of this committee and it's a little nebulous. I know there was no board motion to put this committee in place and it, and none was necessary because of course, the chair can form ad hoc committees. But I don't know how far it'll go, what its limitations are. I don't know when this committee has completed its task and then, you know, dissolution at that point in time. So, yeah, when an ad hoc committee completes its task, the committee is dissolved. But again, I'm not clear on the scope of this committee. So, perhaps either the committee members can speak to this or the chair who formed the committee. I just need what the parameters are. Because this could really sort of evolve and expand over time and really look more like a standing committee over time if we're getting into new policy development and some of these items on the governance parking lot list. So.
Mr. Stribinger?
I believe the committee and the other committee members can certainly correct me, but I believe we were given the output of the work session where the current policies were put into the quadrants of coherent governance and the handbook and what was to be deleted. And we were supposed to actually do it, actually put the things in, merge with the Ori stuff, look at the handbook and look at the deletes so that the output was taken care of. My understanding, or my impression is, many might not exist after today. We're bringing you the product and it's up to the board what the next step is.
Gotcha. And Madam Chair, since you formed the committee, is that also your understanding?
Yes, and I don't have the email in front of me, but I did send the email to everybody about, about that. And exactly, it was the output from the work, the work session with Dr. Torrey.
So, would today, one more question. Would today mark the dissolution of this committee if, if those tasks have been completed?
I think we already have one item that needs to be, based on Mr. Dowling's suggestion, we already have one item at least that needs attention by the, the committee. So, I would assume the results of today's meeting and discussion would result in at least one more meeting for us to codify that and put it into a package. And then after that, I think it's just really after the first reading and it's serving it on an ad hoc basis at this point.
Mr. Dowling?
Well, based on what the chair has said and what David says, which I won't take any issue with, I think that my original question of, do we go through this and ask questions on each one, is irrelevant. I think that the thing to do, the questions seem to be centering around parking lot items. And the question is, how is the committee going to address them in the future? That will result in your coming back to us with a finished product. If this isn't a finished product and is not being presented for first reading, then I think we ought to take this home and read it and wait for you to finish your work. And finishing the work would be taking care of these parking lot items. Just my, I'm not sure how productive going through each one's going to be today if we're gonna do that again at the first reading stage.
Mr. Robine?
Mr. Dowling, we just decided that we were, our task today is to go through the, the parking lot items. We started out with the introduction and then David and, and Rachel said, let's focus on the parking lot items. And I think that makes sense.
You're agreeing with me?
Yes, yeah. And I, I, what I'm saying is, what you've said, it's my understanding, that's what we're doing, correct?
Because I have a bunch of issues in each and every one of these pages, but I don't know if today's the right time to be bringing them up. So, tell me.
Dr. Wyszynski?
I think the ad hoc committee would like to get through the parking lot items first. And if we have time to go through any issues that any board member has throughout the content of the manual, as it is right now, we certainly can do that. I know that on the agenda, we have until three thirty for under this item in particular. So, I think we have some time.
Mr. Smith?
I'd just like to go back to Mrs. Orshak's question for the chair, for the chair, if you would answer. The question was, how long will this committee be in, when will this committee, as Mr. Stribinger just said, will this committee be over today?
Well, I don't think so. My, my feeling was that they were bringing their, what they had done so far forward to the board so the board could see the work product thus far. We're providing input to them and I think that input is gonna require them to continue to meet. For how long, I'm not sure. Perhaps they, they've already, somebody mentioned already, I can't remember who, that it might just require, you know, one, one more meeting. But I did not anticipate, since we're having a discussion today and it's not the first reading, that that would be the end of the committee. Because there are these outstanding questions that they're asking the board to help in the decision-making so they can put that into the, into the manual or handbook.
Okay, I think, I just want to get clarity on that. So, that moving forward, that we won't, we, we have a clear understanding that this committee is still going on and we know that there's a ti-, a time limit on it or we understand, know what, what is going on with the committee.
Mr. Dowling?
I, I might add, Madam Chair, that that's a very different message than the one you gave about how long we were taking on the other ad hoc policy committee.
So, does anybody have any comments with regard to how we would conduct revisions or updates to the handbook portion? Any suggestions?
Mr. Guyer?
I think just a, a once-a-year review. Once-a-year review should be, be plenty.
And, oh, sorry.
And we could have it on the, well, that's again, sort of our annual work plan. Mr. Dowling?
My concern about that would be issues that are time-sensitive. If the, if, if the grievances, under, under that plan, if the grievances had come in one month after the review, it would take eleven months before they're, it's reviewed again. Those things have to be taken care of right away, I think.
Dr. Wyszynski?
I, I don't think that the grievance policy would be in the handbook though.
Yeah.
And I, I do agree with Mr. Guyer about his suggestion about a yearly review. I just would like to add that we try to time it with when traditionally new laws are adopted and things like that. So that we can incorporate anything new after it has been signed in. Yeah.
Mr. Stribinger?
And the other alignment we discussed was when new board members come on, after a couple of months, they could probably tell us what needs to be in that handbook.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Smith?
And, and also, so basically, so the, the parking lot items will go under where? The, the parking lot items will go under?
Well, we gotta address them each individually.
I know, but right, but I'm asking because see, I have a, I kind of have a concern because it's almost like we have two, two SOPs, two Standing Operating Procedures books. I mean, it seems like, like, like one is telling you the normal procedures and then one is telling you something else, kind of stuff you might want to know. But see, the problem I have with this board is once we put things in writing, that's the law. So, you know, I want, I want to be very careful of how we formulate these things and how we do these things. Because you know, it don't take much for one little situation to happen. Someone said, well, what we put there, you knew and you read it? Nah, 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 uh-uh. It's, it's different when it's informational, when informationable. And it's different when it's SOP, when it's Standing Operations Procedures. So, I want to be very careful and cognizant of, of, of that moving forward. I have some concerns.
So, let's, let's let Dr. Wyszynski, since you're leading the discussion, a response to that.
I agree with you. Well, I think SOPs would go in the policy manual and anything else that's, you know, law or factual with regard to how board members, you know, are voted into office and things like that. Those belong in the handbook. So, if at, during our annual review of the handbook, somebody suggested something that more so belongs as a policy, we would direct it there.
Uh, so that brings, that still bring my concern because when you say handbook, it's basically like, uh, like this is the book that we go by more of an informational book or a book of information or, or I, I help you guide. I think those words are more safer. When you say handbook, those are almost the same word as to some, some attorney may take it in court and say, well, he, this is the handbook, you know, that, that you were handed and these were rules versus this is a form of information. I think a form of information is a more, a, a different look versus a handbook. I mean, that's just my, my, my perspective.
Um, I'm, I've written that down and we can ask Ms. Cartledge if there's a, a better term that we use to describe it as opposed to handbook. I think that the committee would be open to using a different term if they thought that it wasn't clear.
Mr. Dowling?
I was part of the conversation that came up with the handbook called frequently asked questions, if you will. There are many things that, social mores or things that we aspire to, for instance, decorum in, in a meeting. But you can't make a policy out of that because it's too subjective. However, it's good for good members to know when they come on board that there are certain expectations that they're not bound to, okay? You can't enforce the handbook. But it's just as a guide. For instance, the South Carolina Press Association puts out a guide to the Freedom of Information Act. It tells them about the Freedom of Information Act. This handbook would tell a new member and even current members, I guess, as to how the board operates. But how, all those how's don't necessarily make good policy because they're not enforceable, okay? So, that's why I believe that a lot of items that we previously had in policy should not have been policy, you know? Thou shalt not embarrass somebody. Can somebody tell me what that means? No one can tell you what that means because it's too subjective. Therefore, it can't be a policy. But it can be in the handbook to try not to embarrass people. I fully support the handbook. I think it's a terrific idea and I'm, I'm all for members' individual rights.
Ms. Orshak?
I may have an overly simplistic view of this discussion, but it seems to me, based upon what Mr. Stribinger said, who is the chair of this committee, that the committee has met its obligation. You put everything into the, the four quadrants or the categories, if you will. You've incorporated the Ori policy manual. At this juncture, it would make sense to me, and this is just my opinion, that the committee has completed its work and a standing policy committee needs to be formed. The, this manual in front of us that Ori uses endorses such standing committees. And that much of what's on the governance parking lot deals with policy. And I think that's a, a dedicated concerted effort in and of itself. That's just my input. I think the committee has done good work. You've met frequently to get this finished product. And I, I, there was no motion in place as to what specifically this committee's primary goal and objective should be. But it sounds like, from what Mr. Stribinger said, that I think you've, you've reached your, you've met your goal and you did it on time because you were given a month. And I think January thirtieth was your first meeting and today's, we're wrapping up February. I think next steps would be to form a policy committee.
Mr. Stribinger?
I'm not gonna disagree with that. It's up to the board, what the board wants to do. But no matter what we do and next step, we're gonna have these parking lot items. And the board needs to, needs to decide what it's gonna do about them. Because you can't, you know, a committee, it, it's just unfair to have a committee of three, four, five, however many people you put on to try to figure out an answer to this. The whole board should figure the answers out to these questions. That's kinda how we decided to put them on the parking lot. We said, look, these are big deals. They need to be discussed by the full board.
Well, could we pull out, could we pull out the items that are not related to policy on this list? Because you're looking at, number nine is policy. Number eight, member discipline, as it stands in this right now, member discipline is a policy. Discussion of a grievance policy, okay, that's three. Need to align results in the strategic plan. Well, that's, that's something perhaps that might not apply to policy. But, but most of this list appears to be the development of some policy in one form or another. I think the committee did great work, so hats off to the committee.
Dr. Wazniewski.
Um, I'm just going to add one comment with regard to the completedness of the ad hoc committee's work. So we've gotten through, you know, aligning, aligning things out, mapping things out. The results section, as you'll see, under number six, has largely not been mapped out with the strategic plan. So that is work that falls under what I would perceive the scope of the current ad hoc policy committee's, um, responsibilities. That does still need to be completed. Um, and that's why it is also on the parking lot item because it was something that was incomplete by this board meeting.
So I'm gonna, um, let's see, does Ms. Fidrich or Ms. Robine like to speak since you're on the committee? Have anything to add?
I don't think our work's done. I, I think that, um, we, as Rachel said, we do need to do this, um, to, to do the, uh, align results with the strategic plan. I also felt like we have sections that, that we're trying to meld what was in our policies with, uh, with making something new or, or, and I, I felt that was part of our charge to do, part within our scope. And the things that are on the parking lot, um, we all felt, I think I can speak for all of us, that we wanted to come and take, have discussion, have respectful, you know, pro and con discussions about these items. So then we could go back and, and, and include them in our work.
All right, Ms. Fidrich, and then Mr. Dowling.
I agree with Ms. Robine that I, I did not think that, that our work was done. Uh, I thought we were taking more of the temperature right now as to how does the whole board see the work we have done thus far? Okay? What, what areas of concern does the whole board have? What, um, areas do they think, yeah, you're going in the right direction? The results section, all policies. And we have not addressed that yet because you have a policy about numeracy. You have a policy about ma, um, literacy. You have a policy about different things. And so we, we still have to craft those policies. And we haven't even touched the results section. So I, I did not think our work was done.
All right, Mr. Dowling.
Okay, the product that you presented today has in it a proposed standing policy committee, correct? Six standing policy, six standing committees, one of which is policy. Now, has everybody got the hot parking lot items in front of them?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, three, four, seven, and eight are policy creation. I don't think that policy creation was anywhere near your charter. I think that we should thank you for the work you did. You've aligned the product and we create the standing policy committee that you've, that is in your work product and have them tackle these parking lot items. I don't think, I didn't read the ad hoc memo to mean that you'd be creating policy for the board.
May, may I reply to that? Mr. Dowling, um, may I speak to Mr. Dowling? This is exactly the temperature we're trying to take. So what you are sharing with us right now is part of what exactly we were seeking for today.
Yeah, so my, my temperature is we need a standing policy committee to create policy.
That's what I said earlier. That's what I said earlier. So we concur.
Ms. Robine.
Um, the parts in this thing that you're referring to about the committees, Mr. Dowling, are highlighted. Everything that was highlighted were things that we needed to talk to the board about. They're not things that we were recommending. They were things that we put in there for, for a discussion.
Did we know that? Did you tell us that?
I, I think, I'll let Rachel answer that.
I apologize if I was not clear. Um, I did mention at the very beginning that on the title page, there are highlights and those are areas that we indicated needed attention by the board or needed changing to align with our dates or revisions, things like that. Because there are some, there's information in here that's relative to Ori County's revision dates that doesn't align with ours.
Mr. Smith.
Well, at this time, I guess it would be, I'm not sure if it was correct, but I guess I should, uh, make a motion that we, um, go ahead and, um, possible, well, that we make a, make a motion that we adopt a... Where, where, where was it at in this, uh, policy? What was that, where, where was it at in, in, in the, uh?
It's G5 and it's highlighted. GC5, page 26 of 62, number four, talks about standing committees. That's what the ad hoc policy committee had a question about, about whether or not that would be the will of the full, full board.
I will draw that.
So it seems like, I mean, we've allotted till 3:30, less lunch, to, uh, work on this. It seems like, why would we not wanna have some of these discussions now, um, since the committee has, has brought this forward now? And, and, um, I mean, that's exactly what you were trying to get was to have a discussion with the board, not call this a first reading, get, as you call it, the temperature of the board. So, um, I mean, we've got the time allotted. To me, it seems like, why, why wouldn't we wanna do it now? We're all, you know? Doctor, she was first, Dr. Wazniewski.
Yeah, I was just going to try to see if we could handle item number two. Because that would be something that we would put into the policy manual and would likely help to direct us in the future. And those highlighted items, just so that everybody knows when they're looking through again, I'm just going to indicate that anything that's highlighted is stuff that we would like direction from the full board on.
And that was gonna be my cool, my question.
Mr. Dowling.
I agree with you, Madam Chair. It's a perfectly logical question. Why wouldn't we wanna have this discussion? My point is, we should be having this discussion with a standing policy committee. Because the ad hoc policy committee's charter did not include the creation of a policy. The point that I think you need to stop at is to say, insert placeholder for grievance policy and not spend time working on what that grievance policy is. Because that's a subject for the standing policy committee to bring a recommendation to the full board.
Dr. Wazniewski.
Mr. Dowling, do you feel that the full board can, can make policy?
I think that the full board can evaluate the recommendation of a policy committee, which is what we did before.
Right, I'm just trying to get to number two, where we're talking about motions recorded and how policy, additional policies should be added, which is what, uh, the additional line items are below that, which is the grievance policy, which would be new. I'm trying to see if you believe that the full board would be able to participate in that discussion now so that we can put that into what the ad hoc policy committee is working on.
I believe that we can participate in the discussion now to give to the standing policy committee that replaces your committee.
It's your exchange, that's fine. I didn't want to gauge where he was, so.
Ms. Orshak.
We've, we've already been shown that an 11 or 10 members contributing to the development of policy is cumbersome, complicated, and time consuming. It is best handled by a committee which brings forward recommendations to the full board. My earlier position that we do need a standing committee for policy has been well documented and it began several months ago. It is still my position and I support largely what's, what's in here in regard to, uh, the six standing committees. I like a lot of what the Ori, um, manual has to offer. But again, I, 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 I think it's, it's, it's gonna be a, um, a long exercise if you involve the full board on policy development as opposed to a committee dedicated to that process.
Dr. Wazniewski.
I would agree with you. But I do know that historically, we have created policy via motions. And that's what number two is trying to address. Do we need a standing policy committee so that when motions come forward in the future and there is a policy created out of motion, that the policy committee then determines where it's put into the policy manual? Is it then required to be read again? Is there, is there, at the time of the motion being made for a policy to be created, is that automatically adopted? Is it a discussion at that time of where it's going to go in? That's what I'm trying to get at in number two, of that if we have policies that are created from motions, that we know how they're being incorporated and codified into our policy manual and that they're not just historically stored in minutes.
Mr. Dowling.
Very good question, Rachel. If we have a standing policy committee, the only motion that comes to the full board initially is we, do we need a policy on such and such? If the answer's yes, the vote is to send it to the policy committee. That's the total involvement of the full board initially. Then the policy committee drafts a recommendation policy and brings it back to the full board. And the board says yes or no. So that is, that takes the cumbersome part out of it. So the only motion that you're entertaining initially is a motion to have a policy in a certain subject. So if we took in, number two is not settled, the question as worded in number two is not settled by a policy anyway. It's just a procedure. How is the board gonna proceed with motions? And I'm suggesting that it can proceed with motions by forwarding them to a standing committee if the board so desires.
Dr. Wazniewski.
Yeah, I certainly would, would entertain that as a motion. I'm just saying historically, and the ad hoc policy committee was aware of this, historically, that's not how things have been done. We have policies that we went through, um, and have put in here that came from motions at board meetings. So we tried to codify that, um, as much as possible. So if you'd like to make a motion for that to be how we move forward, that's what we were looking for.
I agree, Rachel, but those motions that became policy based on a motion were not binding as policy because there is a policy in place that a policy requires three readings. So all anybody could do in that context is make a motion for a first reading. You cannot make a motion and turn it into policy based on one vote by the committee. Because that's forbidden by board policy.
Mr. Strippinger.
A motion becomes effective as soon as it's passed. No matter what you call it, we pass a motion, it's effective immediately.
Mr. Dowling, you don't have the floor. Mr. Strippinger does.
It's not a policy, but if you want, if you want to memorialize it, as the attorneys like to say, then you put it into policy. That's the way you memorialize it. And, and that's what this question is going after. When, when there's a motion made, where are they recorded? And if they have to go into policy, how do they make that transition into policy to go through three readings? But you can't go through three readings and override the motion. Once motion's passed, it is effective then. And you and I have had this discussion multiple times.
Mr. Mel Campbell.
Well, uh, my question, I guess, is the crux of the question. What's the difference in the role that an ad hoc committee plays versus the standing committee in terms of that relationship? I mean, that's, I mean, I, I, from what I'm listening, it's suggested that the standing committee will have to be there in order to do these things that the ad hoc committee could be assigned short term to do.
Correct.
Uh, you know, that's the decision, can, could the ad hoc committee do what they're doing and think, do it? Why not?
Mr. Strippinger.
My shorthand answer to that, Mel, is that an ad hoc committee is given a specific task to complete. Whereas a standing committee, you know, is standing, it's, it's always there. And that's why that section is highlighted. Some folks believe that committees should be given specific tasks to do and when they finish that task, they're done. And others believe the standing committees are more effective. And that's, that's one of the discussions we, we have to bring to conclusion. And hopefully, we're hoping today, we could have those discussions.
I, I understand, but effectively, you're saying it's still the same thing except the, the standing committee is appointed every time you need one.
Ad hoc, yeah.
Yeah.
And the board determines exactly what they want that committee to do.
Mr. Smith.
All right, at this time, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, um, we, we go ahead and get a, 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 a policy, a policy committee.
A standing policy?
Yeah, a standing policy committee.
I'll second.
Um, Mr. Dowling and then Dr. Wazniewski.
The reason I support this is, is very simple. An ad hoc committee is reactive. It's formed to solve a problem that already exists. A standing committee is proactive. It can anticipate problems before they become issues. In other words, a policy committee can look forward and say, we have, we were exposed because we don't have a policy on this. That's what a standing committee would do. An ad hoc committee would be, be assigned to do damage control because something happened for lack of a policy. That's why it's better to have standing committees. I support this motion.
Ms. Orshak.
And just a reminder, and I know the board knows this, policy creation is one of our top, is one of our five board goals slash priorities. We only have five, it's a very small list. And that's on there. And this would, would, this would reinforce that and show the public that it is a priority of ours. And as we've seen, a new, a new policy or proposal for a policy crops up at almost every meeting, uh, when we convene. So that gives further merit to a standing policy committee.
Dr. Wazniewski.
Mr. Smith, if you're, um, agreeable, I'd like to amend your motion to deal with this parking lot item number two, with how motions are recorded and put into policy. I would like to add to your standing committee that part of their scope encompass dealing with motions that need to be crafted into policy. I'd like to see that encompass in their scope so that we can get rid of parking lot item number two. We know that the standing committee is going to handle those matters and that moving forward, they will make recommendations on those motions that can then be codified into policy if needed. I know that was long, but just, just add that the standing committee's scope will encompass, um, crafting policy from motions and board action for recommendation to the full board. We know that a policy, any committee can't make... Codification of board motions. I just want the scope to be there so that that item is taken care of and that that's part of their responsibilities.
I, I, I will, I will, uh, I accept it, I will accept it.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Orshak.
I just wanna say something, that's, that's... I just want to say something that's, that's valid, and it should be considered when the committee crafts its scope. It's up to the committee to craft its scope, and that could be part of, um, the scope that's brought forward to the board for board approval. That's how we've done all of our committees. Finance committee, anytime we changed a, a word or a syllable in that scope, we brought it forward to the board for approval. And when that committee, you know, crafts a scope, that would be included, of course. I mean, that's almost a given. Um, so that would just be my suggestion, and there may be other aspects of the scope that better define and what the committee will be doing. So it's just a suggestion.
Ms. Robine.
I, I think that the scope of the committee should be determined by the full board. I, I think when you've got committees developing what they're going to work on, they, they can do work that isn't related to, I, I'm uncomfortable with that, so.
No. Mr. Geyer's next.
I have the same problem with a broad scope for a standing committee. I, I really don't like standing committees because it tends to make people into experts, and that expertise doesn't get shared. And I kind of like ad hoc committees when you have people doing different things. I don't want to work on finance all the time. I like to go to, occasionally go to a committee that's doing something in academics. But if you want to have a standing committee, and if that's the way you want to go, then I do not believe you should have a big scope. You should be given a task by the full board, and the task is defined, and say, go and look at a policy on X, Y, Z. And you come back and report on that. But you don't go back and have a wide scope and say, I'm going to look at all policies about A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. No, because then you get a bunch of people going off in different directions and not under the specific guidance from the full board by vote. So that's, that's my concern.
Ms. Fidrich.
I can support for sure a standing committee for policy. That has to do with our governance. It has to do with looking at everything, the, the four quadrants of governance that we are embracing. But your motion is just for policy, correct, the, for a standing policy committee. Because I would not support standing committees in the other areas for the exact reason that Mr. Geyer, Colonel Geyer, just stated, is that having gone through the experience of the past year of these standing committees, you are developing people that have an expertise in areas that full board needs to have knowledge about. So I will support your motion for a standing policy committee.
Mr. Dowling, and Mr. Smith.
I think that no member of the board should have, it's possible for no member of the board to be an expert on everything. We all proclaim expertise in certain areas: finance, policy, academics. People were according to, to the academic committee because they were retired career educators, all right? That by itself declares the members of the academic committee to be experts, all right? The experts give efficiency because the committees that house these experts cannot do a thing by themselves without bringing it to the board. And as soon as you take a standing committee and let them operate only by what the board gives them to do, you have unconsciously created another committee of the whole. And that's why we went to st-, committees, ad hoc and standing, because the committee of the whole did not work. It's a filter by work product coming up from the ground up to the board, board level. If you insist on getting a charge to the board on each and every agenda item that they talk about, then you've started at the top instead of working from the ground up. It's just, just my thinking on it, on the issue. So I still support Mr. Smith's motion.
So my concern is, if this passes today, that's the end of today's meeting, and that's the end of the discussion right now. Anybody have any?
Uh, actually, I was, yeah. Um, I, I apologize. Oh, Mel, Mel was next, but I was.
I'm sorry, Mel. I, that's my fault.
Uh, you know, my question was on the same line. Uh, what does that do for the work of the ad hoc committee? Uh, and a certain amount of disrespecting that. Uh, are we going to encompass their work? And those members in the standing committee, that, you know, that, that, and the work that we've done before. See, earlier, when we had the committee, we did a certain amount of laywork that was used. Uh, you know, I suggest that we continue with the, with the laywork already done by these, by these two former committees in, you know, fulfilling the obligations of the board and governors. But, uh, that's my comment or question or suggestion.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, I'm just concerned with, with, uh, Mr. Geyer, something that you, that you said. It, it, it almost appears when you said that you don't like, we become, we become professionals, and that basically, uh, we basically build relationships. So, you know, hearing, hearing you say that, it makes me mindful of, basically of, uh, chairs, uh, vice chairs of, of, of different positions, basically. I mean, so it seems like we don't even need a chair of the board, or we, we may not even need a vice chair or, or, or chairs committees because you're saying that we become professional. I mean, you know, uh, that, you know, that, that's kind of, uh, I, 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 I would like a little more, um, to be a little, a little, a little more, a little more explaining on that as, as, as well as, you know, I keep hearing board members say that, basically that board members go rogue, and, and they can do this and do that. But, you know, I keep hearing board member go, go, that they, that they can go rogue with these committees, but where, 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 where are they going to show rogue at, especially if they're, if they're doing their job? How I see, the commercial said, is, is, it's a Gecko, not to be, uh, misplaced with Geico. I may see an elephant, I may see elephant as a big elephant. You may see an elephant as a, as a small elephant. So I won't say that committees are going rogue. They may not be going in, 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 in a, in a form that the majority of the board may want them to go. So, you know, I think it's kind of, we have to be careful and cognizant of how, of, of how we say different things about our colleagues, and, and, and how we treat each other and say, well, this person here just want to go rogue. You know, that's, that's concerning to me. So I mean, if you, if you would, I would just like you to kind of, you know, because I keep hearing, I, I keep hearing that.
Okay, let me, may I respond? I don't, I agree with John that you nice to have expertise, and you, and you're more efficient that way. But different people with different experiences look at problems in different ways. And will see solutions that an expert, if you will, don't see. So by having ad hoc committees for a specific topic, say it's in academics, but it's in academics that has to do with career and technical education. Well, I may have something in career and technical education. I'm not a, I'm not an educator, but I've done some work in career and technical education. And so I say, I'd like to be on that committee so we can discuss that. It's an academic thing, but it's not saying that only the experts can be there, and that they set the agenda. I, I just don't believe that a committee that's made up of people that have a narrow focus are going to always come up with the best solutions, and, and a alternative view is, is good. I'm, I'm not saying that somebody should have power to set things up. I'm just saying, open it up by, on a particular topic. You have an ad hoc committee. Now, I agree with Tricia that a policy committee, it's a standing committee, it's not a bad idea because it will allow the policy to be turned around quickly. I am really concerned about this effort today to try to come up with a hundred percent solution when we're doing something that, you know, the best is the enemy of the good. And, and we can continually scroll around with this and try to come up with the best thing instead of, let's get a good product now and put it in place for a while, put it in place for a year, and see how it works. Rather than spend a whole lot of time and come up with a manual or a handbook and everything else that we say in about three months, boy, we didn't think about this. So, you know, I just want, I want to, I want to vote on this mess, on this motion here on the policy committee, and then have a lighter discussion, and it could be after lunch or whatever, about how we're going to operate as a board in other areas, in other, in other committees. And that's basically how the motions are recorded and put into policy as needed. I think it's a good discussion because it's more than just policy. It's, it's all areas. That's my thought.
Okay, Ms. Fidrich.
Dr. Glas, you posed the question that if we pass this motion right now, then it would, it would not allow us to continue necessarily the discussion unless, unless if this motion is passed and you as chair appoint the current ad hoc committee members to the standing committee, then that would then be in place, and we could bring this forward after lunch as the standing committee to discuss. And we would be able to discuss committees and some of those things that, that Colonel Geyer just mentioned. So it was just a thought that I wouldn't let that be a roadblock to, you know, going with a standing committee with this motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dowling.
Standing board policy requires the chair to appoint committees after soliciting input from board members as to whether they want to be on it, okay? I, I appreciate the maneuver that you're trying to, to do, but it would not be in the spirit of how committees are appointed. We have two members absent, okay? In the January committee appointment cycle, usually a week is given for people to apply and demonstrate. This would be a maneuver to just continue on a meeting that perhaps has no need to happen. Again, I think that an ad hoc committee, by its very nature, not because of the, not because of the people on it, but it's by its very nature, looks backwards to something that has already happened, and a standing committee looks forward.
I'm going to say something since I haven't said too much. Um, so, uh, the four committee, committee members, all during our discussion so far, have said they really didn't feel like the work of this committee was done. The, the purpose of the committee was to complete a policy manual. We've gone now several years, you know, working on the policy manual, and we still don't have a completed manual. So I, I do think we need policy. I'm not opposed to that at all, but I'm going to vote no because I would like this committee to finish their job as they also think that they wanted the board input today, and to go back and finish what they had started, and they hadn't, hadn't completed it. So I think here we are, we've got hours, you know, allotted to doing this. It's, to me, it's like splitting hairs, and I know you're not going to agree with that. Some of you are not going to agree with that. But I want to be effective, and I would like to see us continue to work on these questions and to continue the, the committee.
Point of privilege. I'd like to ask you if you're speaking as chair or as an individual district representative.
As an individual.
Sounds like a chair to me.
As an individual. Ms. Robine.
Help me understand. I, I see that we're, a motion to create a standing policy committee responsible, and I get that, and, and that's something I could support, but does that mean that the ad hoc committee has to go away? Can't the ad hoc committee finish their job, and this get started as well? And, you know, I, to me, that doesn't say we can't finish and have conversation about this, but, you know, help me.
Um, did you want to go next? Yeah, Mr. Smith, and then Mr., Ms. Orshak.
Okay, okay, well, uh, well, 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 my thing is as well is that if we're, if we're adopting this, this, uh, this current governance, um, and, uh, standing policy committee is a part of, one of the things that the governors, uh, do, then why not move forward with it, you know? It's because i- i- it's, it's, it's already a part of this, of this current governance. So, I mean, i- i- if it is, then, then why delay it, and why just not, why, why not go ahead and move forward with it now? And, you know, start getting the ball really rolling. That's, 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 that's one of my, uh, what's the hesitation of go ahead and, and, and let's get the job done.
Ms. Orshak.
Okay, William, first of all, the motion up there, did you accept Dr. Wazniewski's amendment to your motion? Because right now, this is the motion on the floor that we have to vote on. And what it does is it very specifically limits only to this potential standing policy committee codifying motions from board actions. It does not imply that the scope would include creation of new and needed, missing, uh, policies. And so I need first clarification on that before I raise my next point.
Let's have, didn't Dr. Wazniewski made the amendment, so let her.
I did make the amendment for that to be included in the scope, but it certainly was not supposed to be the only item that would have been in the policy committee's scope. So it's, it, it definitely is not a limiting factor. I just added in that I was trying to get rid of item two on our parking lot item, and also to deal with that moving forward as that being a responsibility of the standing policy.
Understood, understood. So what was your motion, um, Mr. Smith? We need to clarify that first. It is the motion on the floor.
Right, could, could you go back to my motion, Robin, uh, from the, the original?
No, the, it, yeah, Rachel's motion is the one that's on the floor because it was the amendment.
Was it seconded?
Right, but she said it was, it was a part.
He did. Mr. Smith seconded it.
Right, right, no, well, right, but also she said it was a part of my, uh, she said.
The way it's worded right now, if we need to change it to more clearly state what my intention was, then we certainly can. I was just trying to give Robin something to put on the board.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll kill.
But now there's an amendment from Dr. Wazniewski.
Right.
That needs to be added.
Yep. Right, that, right, that needs to be, right, right.
But that is, Madam Chair, that is not what she amended. If, if, short of rewinding the videotape, I could tell you exactly what she said when she made her amendment. She said, William, I support your motion. I just want to add to your motion that number two would be included. Number two didn't replace anything else at all. So the motion should read, motion to create a standing policy committee with inclusion of codifying motions as part of their agenda.
And I, I wasn't finished speaking. I, I appreciate the input. Um, I want to recognize what Kathy said. She's right. If there's a couple items left that the ad hoc committee needs to button up. For example, something that's not policy-related, okay? I, I don't see any reason why the ad hoc couldn't button that last item or two up. Uh, if it's encompassed in what we all understand that ad hoc committee's scope to be, and then anything and everything, the governance parking lot, that pertains to policy would then trans-, transfer over. And, um, and I appreciated Mrs. Fidrich's comments about just reformulating the existing ad hoc into a policy committee. I think your intention was to just streamline that process. However, um, I guess we do have to follow our existing guidelines in place for forming a standing. So, but I thought it was good thinking nevertheless.
Mr. Strippinger.
Um, could we get Dr. Wazniewski to tell us what she wants that, her amendment to say?
Can we just add that who- Can we just add that whose responsibilities include but are not limited to codifying motions for Board actions? Just so it's clear that they're not limited to that, but that is one of their main responsibilities.
So while she's doing that, it's still not clear whether this is the end of today's discussion. To me, it seems like that's the end of today's discussion. Dr. Wazniewski?
Madam Chair, I would agree with you that it's, it's, it's not clear where the ad hoc committee's work stops and where the standing committee's work begins. I think that that's a discussion that we need to have based on the parking lot items that we have listed here because either, these are the items that the ad hoc committee has listed out are outstanding. So if we could maybe go through that list and indicate which ones is the Board's will to move to the standing committee, that's a suggestion, and the others that stay on the ad hoc committee until that committee has presented a finished work product. That's just a idea.
So do you have a recommendation?
I think Ms. Orshak listed out a few items.
Last point, Madam Chair, there's nothing to do with that. Amendment where they have a standing committee, inclusion of number two. If that passes, then we can discuss where the ad hoc committee stops and the standing committee stops.
Dr. Wazniewski?
So we are gonna have that conversation after we take this, so we, okay.
So we're only, we're voting on the, the amendment where the, um, Dr. Wazniewski's amendment, which means that the standing policy committee would include but not be limited to codifying, codifying motions from the Board actions. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries, let's see, seven, yeah, seven, one. Now, is that right, seven? Eight, sorry, I can't add, eight, one. So now the, the motion is to create a, this, I guess it's a kind of moot, but we'll vote on the original motion, which was Mr. Smith's with the amendment added, motion to create a standing policy committee to include but not limited to codifying motions from Board actions. All those in favor?
We just voted.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, then that's fine, okay, that's good. All right, let's eat lunch.
So, Chair, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so is my understanding then that the ad hoc committee has not been dissolved? Therefore, we can continue this conversation after lunch, is that correct?
That would be my opinion, but I'm just one of, one of nine here.
Okay, I, I, that's, my understanding is that that is the case, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm just gonna make a statement that I'll be here after lunch to have that conversation.
Good, I'll be here with you.
Mrs. Orshak?
May I add something? Thank you. I think there are a number of items that don't specifically relate to policy that can be easily addressed after lunch, I agree.
That's what I actually right right.
Mm-hmm. That's what you said to be eaten, William.
Yeah. Okay. Here's a here's a.
Oh no, I had such bad success at making it, but I don't make it. I can't see the whole thing.
It's about the water content.
See, I always took a water part. But I don't like that sauce. No, it's a lot, but you'll see it, it'll sweat and stuff like this. And then you have the foot.
How was Mr Foster today?
Sure.
All right. I you know, that's something I usually I I do that and I do something else.
I'm not gonna find you.
Yeah, but I think that's my problem. It's not necessarily done. So I tell him that I don't put much away. I don't have to know how you call it, how you keep it going. Or I already do using it. You know, I mean, some of it, we're getting off it, but just get off.
It's a lot.
He's a homeward, uh, obviously he's a homeward.
He's a manager someone needs to teach him.
So if you're trying to find a problem, not to give others.
Of course, it does, that's why I did nothing because I'm not providing drugs. And when I'm like, it's not crystal because of the bird.
Yeah, can always can always.
It's also.
Higher.
I didn't have like I didn't know that. Uh, I I I would probably because um. Well, I don't need for the future and go to that already. So I thought a lot, so we're really trying to find a lot. Right, we have it, we have we have just uh, my husband, he has all uh, he'll take the reference. And it's fabulous, so we know a lot of that. But I need to know more. There's sometimes. I know, I do love it. Thank you. I'm wonderful.
Check it out.
Yeah. I I can, I had the stones and I.
Aw, man.
Did you make those stones?
Yes.
A baby, honestly? I was, I'm sorry, this is a thing, I can get back here for a second.
Oh, there's still like.
Oh, so do I.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I would be able to take one home. They are, they were fabulous.
So you are, I'll bring them back up.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have to like sauce here. You guys, it's.
So yeah, it's, I hope it's uh.
Why not?
Do you want me to turn sauce to?
I mean, I'm into it.
So we're very well.
We're in.
I could work on it. So. You don't have to worry about it. Um. Yeah, I'm I'm trying to, I'm working like like your job job.
Then you question yourself.
Well, I got one last time. And I thought in the morning, I knew that that for months. It's all was a lot. I went to support it with a colleague. We were there. I'm sure we should. But I.
Do you understand?
I just said once I've given lots of different options. This will be enough to give you what you need. When you set your target. I'm sure the dream is. Yeah, we know. I know she said. You know, so yeah, I think how it took the. I have a. But it's. He's not doing coffee. Okay.
You always think about it. Always talking to the best. She should have seen.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
So.
As Robert told me way into it.
Immediately built up.
Yeah, we walked into border and I asked him, I said, hello, I'm from, you know, I got married. And he said, please start to share about it. Yeah. And that was, that was right there. Right.
That's. Better. I'll play it like it's like two weeks ago. Oh, there's. Yeah.
Collection name. He's here, that's right. I already found it. I'm very far. But I have to hear. He's going to have to. Check that. He's got that.
There are no calories.
Okay.
So it's cause it's linked you, it's linked.
Oh, sad. I was wondering. Cause we got. Is this something? Okay. I know, I know, I know. It's not. I saw, I saw. My ear. But I was, I was saying I was reading a headline. Disneyland closed for. Well, okay, Toki had given plans. Yes. Okay. Little important detail you omitted there to get people to read it. It's like, that's a pleasure. You know, this is the trap.
You got.
All right, so thank you. Yeah.
Last slide. Yeah.
I just. Um, yeah.
What'd you do today? Are you all today?
I did, I went this morning.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I mean, I was.
Um, I just. No, it's a weekly task. I mean, a lot of people have to go in. So um, where I go at Buffalo Correct, I'm under the market street. We have two main street. Um, there are a, there's probably about five. That will net this anything. So um, but I look down the line and the streets have at least every station had a newsroom. Like people were already voted. And I got there and I was like. So that's a lot to go over. Yeah. Right. And then of course, you know, like it's open, so anybody would be willing to go. You know, it's probably kind of, there are probably a lot of those. You know, the couple of years where we pay for the gun primary. But I was surprised to not have. And also Kathy said that the X M C this, the this collection. Like people who are hired. So.
Not now.
Yeah.
I think they really started.
Well, and I think a lot of it is the early winners. Any of people that can go early and go for a week. So, you know, people be aware of. I don't know. I see. Just.
Yes, sir. This is. Yes, sir. That's a brand new bug. Uh, it's. Oh, it's just. Yeah, 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 spirit. It's not bad. Yes, sir. They told me they were there, uh, they they told me they were. They did. Are you uh? Okay, did we tell you? Yes. They're coming. We just talked. We're not, we're not. When you. We were talking. She's like. So we were talking about. And quite few people expressed themselves. And we had to move. Like you convinced her. Yeah. I walked. I think that I need to retire. Oh, wow. I know. That, that, uh, that was. One stop five, ten right. I think I think. There you go. There you go. All right, I'm gonna sit in mine. Look, I want that some. Yep. Hey, bro. I forgot to take the last one. Just the first. I was afraid. I think it was nine hour nine. So it used to be like crazy that he wants to get into. Could you jump himself into conversation?
Yeah. So much.
Do you watch it? Yeah. Well, uh.
Doctor Gage, what time are you? Yeah, like one thirty, uh, one fifty okay. So I'm gonna run back to my office. Okay.
Oh, actually, you should have. No, no.
Sorry.
I was very stunned. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
You're all right.
It is. Right. Everybody, everybody. Well, I say it means in first. Um. Yeah. And I do all these. But it's. It's just like. It's like. You know, you're. Yeah, well, I can say now, when you come in, I want to land. Now, I I was working on it. I mean, like, you know, here, it's like I don't have any scratch. So long. But I think that's. But it does. So. I don't. No. I'm just.
...up the different items that are still on the governance parking lot items list. Certain items to the ad hoc committee and certain items to the standing committee. So, based on our conversations today, I believe there's still some cleaning up of the handbook, adding in how often it will be revised, which I believe we've decided on annually. So that's number one. Number three, the how do we handle the bylaws section in our results is something still under the ad hoc committee. And number six, the need to align results with the strategic plan, because that was an unfinished item as well. There was conversation today with Ms. Crosby about performance expectation to D, the debt management plan, which I believe would fall under OE six and be in addition. We discussed adding that rebate arbitrage premiums conversation, so that I also believe would be under the ad hoc policy committee. So those are, the items I think should fall under their purview. With regard to the standing committee, I see items seven, eight, and nine, as well as the highlighted items that are in the manual right now that we've highlighted that the ad hoc committee has indicated still needs some attention. And for clarity, numbers four and five, I believe, are administrative items for Robin.
Mr. Dowling?
Rachel, on number three, how do we define bylaws? And how do bylaws differ from policy?
That's a good question and one that the ad hoc policy committee was looking at. That was something that we didn't get to complete during our work. We still had questions surrounding that and how it fits in with the results section, which was still under construction, if you will.
My own concern is that using the term bylaws portrays the quantitation that a rule that you've made is suddenly a law, when a lot of the policies we make are not law. But if we call them a bylaw, people can get confused by that. And I think that works in private sector, public sector organizations rather than private.
Right, and that was a conversation that we were having about the naming of it and that title, because we also were concerned about utilizing the terminology bylaws.
So maybe that's a good thing that Ms. Cartlidge could weigh in on, just like the handbook terminology too. Ms. Robine?
I also, I read this in Robert Rules, because they have a section on bylaws. So I referred to that, and it says, the definition in Robert's Rules is assemblies and organizations need procedural rules to guide parliamentary procedure. The different kinds of rules assemblies and organizations can adopt are, and then it goes down to bylaws. Are the rules that the organization uses for its own administration. Usually, an organization appoints a committee to draft the bylaws before implementation. So, I don't know, that's what it said in Robert Rules.
May I respond?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Robert's Rules is, of course, our default guide when we don't have a policy. But I'd also urge caution in that Robert's Rules was devised for public sector organizations. And as a result, those organizations can enforce certain rules that public officials, elected officials cannot enforce upon each other. So, got to be careful there. We use Robert's Rules only in an emergency.
Ms. Strivander?
Yeah, we had agreed that bylaws was a legal term that we wanted to avoid.
Nice and loud, David, please.
We had agreed that bylaws was a legal term that we needed to avoid.
I can't hear you.
We had agreed that bylaws was a legal term that we needed to avoid. We also looked at the bylaws, and in their bylaws section are their performance metrics. So it didn't make any sense, that's why it's a question. It didn't make any sense to us.
So is bylaws a term used in coherent governance, or?
It's a term in the Ori manual that we think we needed to get rid of, that's why it's a question here. It didn't make any sense, and during, I don't know if you were here, but during the work session, we had the facilitator call someone from Ori and say, "What did you mean by those bylaws? Why do you have bylaws?" And she didn't get a straight answer. Basically, the answer was, "We put stuff in there we didn't know where to put anywhere else." Kind of like our handbook. So she didn't get a straight answer, but it's kind of bollocked up when you look at it, so, and that's why it made it on this list. The first page is all these numbers, which is similar to our results.
Ms. Orshak?
All right, another process question. Tina, you gave each of the standing committees the role or the job of looking at the performance expectations that fell under our umbrella, and looking at them and making any changes or revisions, and then bringing those recommendations back to the board. The finance committee recently discussed that. We have yet to embark on that. We're going to, and I was just wondering what that process will be. Will the academics committee be looking at all of their performance expectations? I guess now we're calling them operational expectations. So, what's that going to look like? And what's the timeline? And when we have these recommendations, are we then handing them off to the ad hoc committee for incorporation? What's the process?
Well, the process is, I believe normally we should be looking at them in August, if I remember correctly, from the annual work plan. And the committees did not do that this past August. So, that is why I felt it was important to have that come forward at this point, since the annual work plan is obviously key to our coherent governance model. And let me quickly find my copy of those. Yeah, so if you go, we're still working off the 2008, we're still working off the 2018-19 annual work plan. So that's another thing that has to be addressed at some point. But, yes, the committees need to review their PEs and see if they're going to make any recommendations to the board for modification, or addition, or whatever. So, I mean, obviously, the sooner that's done, the better, I mean. Ms. Fidrich?
I'm so glad we're doing this in a workshop, because there's just so much more time to have these kinds of conversations. In being on the ad hoc policy committee, I understand a lot more about those PEs, and knowing that, knowing now and understanding where they came from. So the PEs come from the strategic plan, okay? Those PEs are almost verbatim from the strategic plan, either as a quality indicator from the advanced ed indicators, or they are some of the subgoals as written by the district. So that's where those PEs come from. And as you can tell, all the, if you look in the annual work plan for the PEs that are assigned to the chief instructional services officer, therefore the academic committee, you can see that it's not all inclusive. All the indicators in the strategic plan, from which, again, the PEs come from, we need a lot more PEs if we were to go through each one of those. So, my question is, and this is to Dr. Rodriguez, too, is we know there's a new strategic plan coming out, an updated one and/or new, I'm not really sure. And if our PEs are derived from the strategic plan, which they are, then it seems to me that we would have that chore, that task, to do once the strategic plan is adopted. I'm just bringing that up, because what are other people's understanding of that?
Dr. Wisnewski?
Yeah, I agree with you, Trish. I think that that would be something that would fall under the purview of the standing committee. So once that strategic plan is, you know, brought forward, any additions that would need to be codified as an OE could be done so by the standing committee, and they can bring forward those recommendations and whatnot. Because we pretty much use the same exact language from the PEs, so there wouldn't be any changes really brought forward. It's just, here's what strategic, but it would funnel through the standing committee is what I would see that kind of working as.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Okay, so my only concern with that, and this was not under the purview of the ad hoc policy committee, is that, in my opinion, after having looked at the strategic plan and read the quality indicators of the strategic plan, that there were PEs, there were missing PEs. There were things that, since our job as oversight and what we are, you know, tasked to do, that there are things that were missing in that annual work plan. That is not, in my opinion, a very comprehensive annual work plan for what the expectation is going to be. Now, it's going to change a little bit with the OEs, as far as, you know, the way that those are designed, but I still think it's a very important thing, is that everything has to align. And until we have that strategic plan and approved by the board, it would seem like a waste of time to go over the current PEs until we determine exactly how that strategic plan is going to differ from the one that we're working from. Does that make sense?
All right, let's see. Okay, Mr. Dowling?
I attended a academics committee workshop, committee meeting, some months ago. And I forget what the topic was, but some administrators presented to you a PE. And I was happy to hear you say, "I can't go to the board with that, because you haven't given me any evidence." Okay? As I look back on that now, I think if we didn't have the academics committee as a standing committee, who would ask that question? When they come to the board with a PE, it's, yeah, oh, okay, good job. Yep.
Yes, you're right, you know, we did. We did not accept a PE, because the evidence for that PE was not, in our opinion, as the three of us, sufficient enough. But bringing a PE in front of the full board, I believe, I would ask that same question, and I would say the same thing, as would perhaps Colonel Guyer through his lens, like he mentioned earlier, you know, looking at something from a different lens. And I just think that bringing the PEs or the OEs, you know, to the full board, gives us all such a greater understanding of the complexities of how the school district is going to succeed.
Well, that makes sense. I would just add, as long as we can have the evidence more than 12 hours before the meeting.
All right, let's see, Ms. Robine, and Dr. Wisnewski, and Ms. Orshak.
The important piece is, after we have our OEs and we know that they're aligned, is that they go to Dr. Rodriguez. And he has to, for each OE, he has to write how it's going to be measured for compliance, what he's going to do. He's going to do the reasonable interpretation, he's going to come up with, you know, this is the evidence that I'm going to give you, that will come to us, and we have to agree whether that's the kind of evidence that we think we'll want, that will warrant that PE, OE. And then, when the OE is presented to the full board, we're going to be looking at it for compliance. So that's, you know, really important work that needs to be done. And as soon as we can get the OEs in his hands, the better, you know, it's a huge task for him. If you remember Dr. Torrey saying that, once we got to this point, the OEs, you know, Dr. Rodriguez and his staff are going to have a huge amount of work to do. And after the initial vetting, if you would, of the OEs, and definition of reasonableness, and compliant identification of what it would look like, then it gets easier. But this first go-around is going to be huge.
Dr. Wisnewski?
Yeah, so what it sounds like to me is that there's a couple different components of the OEs that need to be addressed by whomever. The missing ones that would come from the strategic plan, that are either, that the district adds new ones, or ones that we as a board in our oversight capacity see are missing still, as well as those that might come from current committees, standing committees. So I'd like to ask you, Chair, how you see that working into a timeline? Because as you mentioned, Vice Chair, there is the issue of getting that information to Frank, so that he can be assessed on a timetable that makes sense. You know, if we're adding in new things, we can't look, you know, three months down the line and say, "Okay, how'd you do with that?" We need to be able to be giving time, and I kind of want to make sure that the board as a whole is cognizant of if there are any new ones that come forward that, you know, take that into consideration when we do gauge that in the future.
To me, it seems like it's going to be almost a year process. I can't imagine how it could be otherwise, since he's also got to come up with, you know, first, as Kathy mentioned, a reasonable interpretation of the operational expectation, plus he has to give us indicators that we have to agree on as to how it's measured. And I just don't see how you can do that in a few weeks, or, I just, I think especially the first year is going to be kind of almost working out the kinks of it. Yeah, sure.
I think that then, with that in mind, we need to have some type of timetable, because we know when the strategic plan is due, we know when our committees meet. So we need to take all of that information and put it into a timeline, so that we know what our committee deadlines are, so that we know the standing policy committee, what kind of work and what deadline they're working under, so that we're all on the same page, and we're making sure we deliver our products at the right time.
So, I can, I'm pretty certain, and Dr. Rodriguez, you can probably answer this, I think the strategic plan is due at the end of April every year. Is that correct? You have to submit it to the state by then. So, do you think you, with your staff and the board, can come up with a timeline? I mean, in the sense of, as Dr. Wisnewski has just said, to put this all together? I mean, it's not something that's going to, as we all know, it's not going to happen overnight or in a few weeks. It just can't.
Yeah, I know that we have, you know, a little bit more work to polish up that strategic plan. So, you know, we got some feedback yesterday on the strategic plan, so I think that that's valuable info that we have to embed in there as well. So, I mean, we can, we can, we can strive to try to get back here, you know, get back to the board, or maybe for that.
I think in the work session in April is probably too late.
Yeah, it needs to be before that. The second, maybe the second board meeting in March. I know, I mean, but, but we're going to need to get it, you know, it is, here's the piece, right? It is, it is a, what we send up to the OE, is still considered a working document, right? A fluid document, that we, we can still, I believe, make adjustments, send it back to. We have to get it in. And that's important to us for a number of reasons. One, it's date due, okay? But two, we want to send along a waiver for start time, for start date.
I think, Mr. Strivander?
This is why I had to draw that diagram, so I could line things up. The OEs come down from the strategic plan. The strategic plan is submitted to the state. Are the measurements in the strategic plan? Because if they are, then the reasonable interpretation's already been done.
I think some of them are from...
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so, too.
So I think those interpretations are already probably in the strategic plan, but we'll know more when we actually see the strategic plan, right?
Mr. Dowling?
This is just a comment. Two months ago, the board voted, I won't say we, but the board voted to adopt coherent governance. There's a year, it is a long, long time between that and Dr. Rodriguez doing all the things that he has to do, all the Is that he has to do, all the Ts that he has to cross. It's suicidal for us to think that right now, we are using coherent governance. We have to continue doing business the way that we've done business, until all is ready to have one launch. So, what are we going to do while all these things are going on, Dr. Rodriguez? That's the question I ask.
All right, Dr. Wisnewski?
Just based on what we're discussing here, it seems to me that the ad hoc policy committee would continue on with their work through the time that the strategic plan is presented. And then, I would think, based on the amount of work that we did and the time that we did already, that we could get these, you know, these parking lot items taken care of. And then the standing committee, in my mind, would take over from that point and start working with the items that are coming from the strategic plan, that need to have, missing OEs, new OEs, things like that, to kind of close the circle.
Please, Mr. Strivander?
I just wanted to speak to the coherent governance. We've been doing strategic governance supposedly all this time.
Supposedly.
Supposedly, but we haven't done it very well. And we've seen we've drifted way off. So, we're not really implementing anything new, we're just trying to go back and do it right. So I don't think there's a big, I don't think we're veering. I think we're actually going back to the fundamentals and trying to do it properly. I don't think that's going to interfere with the way we work.
Mr. Dowling?
I have no issue with what Dr. Wisnewski said, except for the fact that I would prefer to see discussion of a grievance policy per se, which is clearly policy creation, go to the hands of the standing policy committee, and have the ad hoc committee continue on just the process issues that still exist in aligning policies and PEs and everything. But as far as the actual creation of policies, seven and eight come to mind.
Dr. Wisnewski said seven, eight, and nine to the standing committee, and all the highlights in the current, like you should say, manual.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you're welcome, Mr. Dowling. Dr. Rodriguez?
So, I just, I just want to be clear, that when I said March 17th, right, I mean, we're going to aim for that, but I'm not talking about the interpretations of the PEs or any of that other stuff. Thank you.
Ms. Robine?
Well, yesterday in the presentation that Dr. Stradus did, the strategic plan was included. So, there are portions of the strategic plan that are done, and I would assume those aren't going to change. So, that could be where we start with this, the OEs. So, you know, the parts that are already done, we could start moving forward on those. And I know the academic parts, there were, Mr. Strivander is correct, there were some measurements there, because there was a five-year and a one-year, and there were growth metrics there. So, I think that we don't have to wait for the whole thing to be completed, since it's a fluid document anyways. I think there are some components that we could say, "Hey, let's start looking at these right now and making sure they're matching up with our OEs."
So do you think that would be the work of your committee?
Yes.
I think it certainly can. I would like to add that to the bottom of the parking lot list, and take care of the items that we've already identified. And then if we can get to that, too, in our time, I mean, we've been very efficient in our time and whatnot, so I certainly see, if time permits, we certainly can get to that and start that, get the ball rolling.
So that would be, so what would you call, add number 10? What do you think it is?
Alignment with the strategic plan.
But we have that under six, really.
Oh, yeah, align results. OEs.
OEs, so add OEs, align, yeah. So actually, maybe we should just modify six to need to align results, OEs. Would there be anything else? I think that would be it. And? At all, there we go, we'll put at all, why not? Okay, so that's really number six, we just need to add to that, instead of, I think, adding another one. So, I'll ask Mr. Strivander a question. So what do you, so, so we have for the ad hoc, your committee, number three, right? We have number six. And adding to the PE that was presented today, language, right, rebate, and? Arbitrage, was that what you said? Yeah. Are we in agreement about that?
There was also a discussion about the title of, quote, handbook, unquote.
And bylaws.
And bylaws. And there was discussion about how often to revise or update the handbook, which I think we all kind of, there was a consensus on annually.
Yeah, yep.
And I believe we said four and five are administrative tasks?
Yes.
Which we'll probably oversee, but the monitoring method might not be, might not be an admin task, but we'll have to, so I think that three, four, and five, three, four, five, and six are all, I believe, in our purview, but, you know, we want the board to tell us that.
Yeah. Do we have any objections to that, three, four, five, six? Because if we do, we can take a vote. Okay. So my question to you, David, is what do you, Ms. Orshak has brought out several times that you had just one month to do your work, which is inaccurate, and I'm going to put it on record, that you were given a time estimate of a month, because we knew we had this work session, but we wanted to have this kind of discussion. So what, so how long do, what do you anticipate, or how many meetings, or, I don't know, you know, just give a rough estimate or whatever?
I'm going to probably go.
Or your other members can chime in.
I think we should report back to the board in a month, see if we're done.
Perfect, because that would be at the end of March, okay? So, yeah. So do you, how will you, ask Robin, when's our, do you want to, what's the first meeting in April? Because I think we have...
I hope it's not April 1st.
Because otherwise, otherwise it's like the 17th of March, which doesn't really give you enough time. So you're good with, excuse me, reporting back to the board on April 7th? Does that sound good to everybody? Yeah? All right, and you'll, yeah. Well, the purpose will be to try, because you're, yeah, finish, finish those, wrap it up, exactly. No, button it up, button, you forgot the word button.
The only reason I was asking that was I didn't know if we wanted to wait to another work session to have more conversation about it. So that's why I was wondering, is it just to, you know, just to come up with specific answers to these numbers that are on here, but then it wouldn't allow itself?
But then it wouldn't allow itself really to as much discussion as a work session does? That, that's the only reason I asked.
And our work session is, is when in April? Yeah, so it's kind of a lot later. Dr. Wozniowski, Ms. Robine?
I was just going to suggest that those items, those, you know, task list items that we've been indicated to, we'll go to the ad hoc committee, that we just come forward at that April seventh meeting with, here's where we are with that task list of items. We recommend either that this goes to first reading or that this goes as a package to the standing committee. You know, however we are at that point in time with those tasks, I have full confidence that we'll be able to get them done though.
All right, Ms. Robine?
So will the standing committee work, start right away and start working on drafting a grievance policy? And discuss, you know, member, things like that? I mean, we've had, you know, we've had employee grievances against a member, and we've had people point out that we've done nothing about that. So the stand, you know, that we, that the board hasn't taken any, hasn't developed any policy about that. So, you know, we wanted to discuss it today, and it was taken away from us to discuss. So to me, and this is just, we're just, just talking, I'm looking for feedback. To me, it would make sense that the standing committee should get to work on this stuff and not wait. Because what we're doing is not, you know, this, this is a separate thing, right? I, that's just my question to you all.
Yeah, we still have a quorum, so we can go on unless somebody else has to leave.
I'm here till three thirty. I was just gonna, I, I agree with you because I've been saying that we needed to craft a grievance policy. I think they can work concurrently. I also think it would be great if we just set forward what our plan is. And we said, okay, these items, seven, eight, nine, and the highlighted items within here that have been drafted by the ad hoc policy committee are going to go to the standing policy committees starting in April, approximately in April or so. So that then at least the public knows, okay, they have a standing committee that's going to get to work on it. I'd like to serve on the standing committee, so. Serving concurrently doesn't sound so, exactly. But, I mean, and that's the, the will of the chair for whoever's going to serve on that committee, but those are just my two cents.
Okay, Mr. Strivender?
I, I agree with Dr. Wozniowski. That's, that makes sense to me. They would start in April and start developing something, and the handoff is very clear. I don't, I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the parallel working. But then I, I looked around the room, not only to discount our quorum, but to see who was here and the, and the folks that might have an objection are not here. So we could come to an agreement that, that doesn't carry much weight. But I agree, that, that's the way I envision it happening. Because we're not going to have a, a product out of the ad hoc committee that's ready for a first reading because it has these kind of holes in it, and so has to go to the standing to finish those holes. And if we could make it very clear, go along with what Colonel Guyer said, make it very clear to the standing committee, this is your charge.
Exactly.
One, these items have to be taken care of. One, two, three, just like Rachel has guided us into doing here. Here it is. Don't wander off and do it, take care of these things. And then we can have a first reading.
So it seems like the changeover date should be, that you want to just make it the April seventh, was it? Yeah. Tentative, yeah.
So if I...
Yes, go ahead.
On this list, I would suggest, you know, instead of discussion of a grievance policy, creation or development of a grievance policy, right? Develop member discipline policy? I don't know how code, okay. What, that's a discussed one? Okay.
Because we already have three point five. And we already have an agey opinion that that's...
But that's good.
That that's good.
Right.
So that should be a quick item.
Okay. So, but, I mean, I, I was just wanting to be clear about the direction. I agree, that's my point with the committee. I think that we should be giving directions to the committees in terms of what board work we want them to do. The committees are supposed to do board work. So as a board, this is what we want you to do.
Well, that could be part of, like, the, the trade-off. Maybe where your work is, where you end up, finished, you could list the items that these are, this is what this committee sees as, as needed going forward in the standing committee. And then we could make a, exactly, you could make the recommendation to the board on the April seventh meeting, and we could vote on it and move from there. Because that way it'll be, I, I am also with Mr. Guyer and Kathy, and I really think the committees need to have a more defined task or work and, and not be left to interpretation and what one particular member's interested in or whatever. They really need to be doing the board's work and what the board is interested in. Mr. Guyer?
Yeah, I, I understand John's belief about looking forward, not reacting. But I believe the board as a whole looks forward. And then if somebody says, I believe we need to look into whatever, you get a vote. And if the majority of the bo, board says, okay, committee, look into it, fine. But to let the scope of the committee give the committee members carte blanche, to look at whatever they want, no. Because we're, because we're spinning our wheels, I'll, I'll be quite frank. So I, I hope that we can codify that and make sure people understand that any board member can bring up something that they think should be addressed. And you bring it up as a motion. If the motion passes, the committees go to work. If the motion fails, it fails.
So I see, I also, just this is in, speaking in general terms, the, you know, coherent governance is what the school board has been using for a number of years, but as we've all, all realized sitting around here, we haven't fully implemented it. After having read the two books, I've read the second one, this one's kind of dry, but it's very much tells you, is very helpful for how to implement it. So I really would encourage everyone here to read it. I see, I see this, you know, I vote, I'm not against policy at all, and I want to make that very clear. But I am a, the whole idea of this coherence governance is to have broad, general policy as opposed to, we're going to have a policy for this, 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 this. And I'm really concerned that, that, that will, you know, we agreed on December third that we were going to, you know, fully implement the coherent governance. And this standing policy committee, I can just see it, you know, tangentially going into really policy type of governance as opposed to the coherent governance. So how are we going to prevent that? Mr. Guyer?
It's real easy. It's, the policy, standing policy committee works at the direction of the majority of the board. It's not a general scope to look at policy continually, because we don't want to do that. Policy needs to stay in place and be proven over time that it's effective. So you don't continually evaluate policy. So if we lose control, it's only because we allow control to be lost by saying to the policy committee, you have carte blanche, look at anything you want. No. You will look at this specific thing, make a motion. And if that motion passes, that's what's done, and that's it. And if they come and make a committee report and they've gone off the tracks, it, oh, timeout. There's no motion justifying that work. And so don't even bother to bring it up unless you want to bring a motion to do that. So we have checks and balances. If we allow the full board to make a vote and make a motion, and that's just up to the chair to say, make, please make a motion.
Dr. Wozniowski?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly that there's, there's checks and balances in place. And also in our current, we had one area highlighted with regard to committees that talks about how often they meet. And, you know, there's, that certainly can be codified to even further add some teeth to those checks and balances. We can codify that in this new manual, which I think we may need to do, and it's highlighted right now for us to look at. So, you know, they certainly can bring something forward, but if it's the full will of the board or not is yet to be seen, so.
So I have a question for those of us that have stuck it out here. So I see, you know, the December third decision for the coherent, fully implement, full, full implementation of the coherent governance model. I see a vote prior to that as being sort of contrary to that. And that is the, what Ms. Orshak brought forward for, I believe the word she used was to investigate or explore, I think the word might have been explore, a procurement advisory committee from the community. That does, my understanding from what I've read and studied, that does not comport, as John Dowling would like to use, with the model. And so I think either we've got to stake, take a stand and says that doesn't, we can take a vote now and say it doesn't. I mean, what, what do the others feel about that? That's my opinion. Mr. Guyer?
I, I believe that it's not a bad idea, but it should be under the superintendent, and he gets with Reggie and says, go out and get this committee and report to the superintendent, and that's it. The board has no business getting into that. That, that is way out of bounds.
Dr. Wozniowski, thank you.
I don't know if that is exactly on topic, but with regard to that, I would agree. I think that that's something the full board needs to, to discuss about either pulling that back or redirecting that. I mean, we have the, is it called the clock? And, you know, we have a lot of committees and things like that, but their formation are under the superintendent. So we need to make sure that we're consistent in that. So that may be something that we need to have as an agenda item, as something we revisit.
Any other comments about that?
I, I agree. I think we, we should revisit it based on, like, the, the, what we're doing currently. And I agree with Dick, you know, we need to bring it up, and there, certainly it's not going to be an eleven zero vote, but I think we should put it on the table and talk about why it's more consistent with coherent governance.
Mr. Strivender?
Why what is? What, what are we doing? The, the citizen advisory committee reporting to the finance committee?
We're right on the procurement.
On the procurement code. That it would be something Dr. Rodriguez would...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the proper way to stop that, but I don't think it's proper. But I, I, I do want to try to figure out how to, how do we get the, the current committees back to doing what the board would like them to do as opposed to what they, the proactive, I think, is the, is the phrase. Proactive means doing stuff the board doesn't even know about yet. How do we, do we do that? Because I, I think that's the issue we're trying to deal with, is the board has specific targets it needs addressed. Not advisory committees, not procurement, whatever. And, and Dick's right, you know, a motion, every, every committee should need a motion. The board wants you to look at this, and you don't need to meet and talk about anything else. This is what, this is what, and when you're going to bring it. Same as, as the way we've dealt with the ad hoc committee. When you're going to have it? Here it is, when you're going to have it? Bring it back. I don't know how we transition that to...
Dr. Wozniowski?
I think we've gotten off the topic of committees and their formation and how they operate. So I would like to suggest for, for a future agenda topic that we bring that forward. About that under the umbrella of coherent governance and how we see it working. I know that it's going to be in the policy manual as well for their formation and blah, blah, blah. But I think that we also need to have a full board conversation about that.
Ms. Fidrich?
I would, I would agree with you, Dr. Wozniowski. But I would also like then to look back and see what other things also might fit underneath that revision. You know, are there other motions that were made? Or were there other things that were decided to be looked into that might need to be revisited and taken back?
Dr. Wozniowski?
Yeah, I think that falls under, like, their, the committee scopes, their approved scopes, basically revisiting that and maybe revising them.
Yeah, and another one would be actually before December third, I believe. It was, I think the second meeting in November, the finance committee, maybe you, you guys remember this better than I do, to develop policy for finance. And that really should, if we're having a standing committee of the board, we shouldn't have a separate, I don't think, policy committee on, or developing policy via finance.
Yeah, and that was my suggestion, but things have changed a lot since then. So, I mean, that was a suggestion that came forward through policy committee and then as things developed with coherent governance and whatnot. So at the time, I believe that the finance committee was, should be tasked with that. But now that we've aligned PEs and OEs, it's changed the conversation significantly, so.
Ms. Fidrich?
I would appreciate the revisiting of the scope of, you know, the academic committee at least, because it, it is so broad. And, you know, we, we had great plans when we first started, you know, academic committee and to, to look at all these different things, like, like even the, the viability of K eight schools. Well, I think along with Colonel Guyer's thoughts that, you know, maybe that is a single ad hoc committee, like, like it was initially, you know, and then it went to academics and so on, as, as some other areas as well. But I think maybe going and revisiting the scope of everybody's committees would be the way to walk back some things.
Mr. Guyer?
I think the scope is determined by the motion. Not a scope first, and then you fit it in, the motion, no, no. You, when the motion is approved, that's the scope, period.
Dr. Wozniowski?
I'm just getting at, like, the, in, presently in the draft that we have, there's standing committees in here. And I think there's like six of them, which we certainly don't need that many of them or have that many right now. So that's something for development.
Mr. Strivender?
Of course, I, I agree with where we're headed, but we've got to stop talking about scope. There's no such thing as scope under the, under this. It's task.
Right.
There's no scope anymore. It's just task oriented. And I think the standing committees only meet when the board tells them to meet.
Four times a year.
But at least quarterly, right. So it's a little different than, than the setup we have now where we're meeting monthly and stuff. So it's, they're kind of on standby. So we, we have to adjust the way we're talking and thinking. So it's not, it's not really getting, changing the scope, it's getting rid of scope. And replace it with task.
I agree with that, with that thinking. And the other thing, I think we, in the past year, the committees did a lot of administrative work. And the committees should be only, only doing the Board of Education work. And I think that, that's something that's going to be very hard to kind of get away from. But like, for example, ARs, I, I don't think we should really even be looking at the ARs. I think that should be solely administrative and based upon the parameters we set and the, your reasonable interpretation, et cetera, et cetera. But, and ARs change all the time, we know, because, you know, laws change, legislation changes. And, I mean, that's why Wendy's got to update them all. But I don't think, you know, since that's not something we vote on, I just really don't think that we should be having the committees do that kind of work. But I, I think that's in all of the committee scopes, yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to make one more comment with regard to that. Because I think, I think... Because I think, I think the way that had been operating before, I think we're putting in a very good framework that's gonna make sure that we are a lot more streamlined in operations, how the committees operate, um, a lot more transparent and easy to understand for the public and for new board members too that come on. So, um, I think we're doing good work.
I, I just wanna say that I think there's one standing committee that should be added and could meet quarterly, and I think it's the legislative committee. I think that, you know, we've taken that on as the whole board, but that doesn't, I don't think that quite works. And that's really doing board work, right? Talk about board work, that's meeting and, and getting our message across and what our priorities are. So I just wanted to put that on the table.
Dr. Wozniowski?
Here, here.
Mr. Strippinger?
This is fun. Um, yeah, we just have to make sure we don't use committees to avoid work. So the board does not use committees so that they can avoid thinking about it. Um, and I think that's one of the pitfalls in the book, going along with the expert thing is, you know, that's one way that the eleven members of the board can abdicate responsibility to three people.
Yeah.
Um, and we wanna make sure we don't allow that to happen. That's one of the reasons, I always want things brought to the full board, um, so that everybody has to work at it, everybody has to think about it, everybody has to read it. Um, so that's just a caution.
I agree a hundred percent with that and it makes much better decision-making for anything we decide about if we're all, uh, you know, knowledgeable about that, about that particular topic or issue or whatever, as opposed to relying on just, uh, a few people who are the experts per se. Yeah, um, what's, anybody wanna make a motion or, um, okay?
I move that the, um, the chair direct the ad hoc policy committee to complete their work on the governance parking lot items indicated today. I mean, if you guys want me to go through them, I can. Um, and direct the standing committee, um, to begin work on the governance parking lot items tentatively after the April seventh meeting? Is that what we decided on?
Uh huh, yeah, I wrote it down.
Yeah, they should be listed out because otherwise we're gonna get into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was, yeah, I listed out. It was, um, for the ad hoc committee, they were gonna work on these govern- governance parking, parking lot items. They were gonna work on three, four, five, six.
Number one, two, I think. Number one, which is finalized.
Yep, that would be fine. That's the ad hoc doing that. And then the standing committee, um, which will take over in early April, that's when this, eight, nine, and the highlights.
Should be, yes, yes.
Yeah, development.
Development.
And, and number eight, that was gonna stay discussed? Okay.
And Rachel, what were we putting in the, um, our ber- the, yeah. So that, sta- that's the, um, ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, let's see the motion. The longest ever. Do we have a second for it? Da- Dave, okay, David or, or Dick?
Either one.
Either one, okay.
There was, uh, two more things. Um, one, uh, before, after April seventh, can you put tentatively, just in case anything changes? Um, and then there was for the ad hoc policy committee, they also were going to, uh, codify an additional, um, item, OE six, parentheses thirteen, and that's related to PE two D, I think.
Mm-hmm, that is two D, yep.
OE six. And it'll be at number thirteen. In reference to PE two D.
Quick policy. Yep, that sounds good. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six oh. Yeah. Do we wanna discuss anything else about this?
You'll be prepared to defend the fact that six, six people, six like-minded members of the board voted on this. You should be prepared to respond to that.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, the meeting was well-posted till three thirty, you know? Yeah, I hear you. Yeah. Ms. Fidrich?
So Dr. Quads, are you going to then ask for people to let you know if they wanna be on the standing policy committee?
Yes.
Right? So just to-
I'll send an email.
Okay.
Or, yeah. And, yeah, that's fine. Um, so do, do we, the other thing we can decide too is, uh, is there anything that we need to add to board business for Tuesday's meeting, given our discussions, you know, what are, any next steps having coming, coming out of here? Like in terms of, uh, the committees?
Could we add, um-
Tanya's?
Tanya's thing.
That has to be added.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
The, uh, the, um, expansion, right, of the, um, projects.
Remember? Yeah, the definition, that, the thing that put everything together, the timeline for the bond.
The workflow.
The workflow.
The workflow, so you can make a recommendation to the board for which, uh, bond, uh, option. Yeah, okay, so that's the only thing that we, I think, comes out today. All right. All right. Do we have any public comments? Oh, no, that would've been at the beginning. Hi, Jody. All right. Um, anything, anything further? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Oh, oh.